Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, February 9th, 2023 at 6:03 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you so much for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Great. The motion passes unanimously. Secretary Boswell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge of the Texas Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing. We do have time for up to 60 speakers. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the board to hear from the public about agenda items that are up for consideration for vote. This is an opportunity for the board to take part in listening to our community. And while we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for information, clarification, or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio record their remarks. We will now play the recorded messages for public comments, so please listen carefully.
This is Rita Hewitt, parent of students at Barton Hills Elementary. I'm commenting on the freeze for Barton Hills Elementary and believe that AISD has misrepresented data that the school is over-enrolled. Follow-up communication by parents of Barton Hills Elementary with more than one district staff has led to an understanding that our 30-year-old portable classrooms were not included in the capacity calculation for our campus. When the portables, which are in use daily, are factored in, our campus has a student capacity of 418, are therefore under-enrolled at 351. I can cite multiple current district documents and reports that also cite Barton Hills' capacity as 418. Further evidence of our under-enrollment is the fact that we lost a beloved kinder teacher this year due to a small and unexpected kindergarten class. I will also note briefly that other elementary school campuses using portable classrooms did not have their portable space excluded from their capacity calculation. Example, Zilker Elementary located several blocks away, which has five portable buildings, some of which have two classes room each, is not considered over-enrolled and closed to transfer. Barton Hills was targeted. I will ask the district immediately unfreeze transfer Barton Hills for all grades next school year, correct the record publicly on our capacity, and if necessary, begin meaningful conversation with the--
Hi, my name is Ann Allensworth. I'm a parent at Barton Hills Elementary. I'm calling with a comment to correct the record about enrollment capacity at Barton Hills. At the 12:15 22 trustee meeting, reported to trustees that Barton Hills had an enrollment of 264, excuse me, an enrollment capacity of 264 students. Just calculation of capacity on our campus did not include our portable classrooms, which have been in use for decades. Calculation of capacity for other schools with portable classrooms included their portable classroom space. With the portable classrooms, our enrollment capacity is 418. Our current number of enrolled students is 351. The true assessment of our enrollment ratio is that we are under-enrolled by 67 students, or a ratio of 84% of our capacity. As a result of this miscalculation and miscommunication, transfers to Barton Hills were frozen for grades 1 through 6. Transfer students are a vital part of our community.
This is Tracy Kane, parent of Barton Hills Elementary. I'm calling to request that transfer students be allowed into our under-enrolled campus. Due to a miscalculation in capacity, transfer requests are frozen, and families are denied access to our high-performing school. Due to the miscalculation in capacity, a beloved kindergarten teacher lost her job this fall, and faculty fear this will become a trend. As parents, we have been asking the questions, but the lack of transparency is causing alarm. Please correct the record for true capacity, unfreeze our transfers, and let's talk about the real issues. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Shem Madhuri, and I'm a student at Travis Early College High School and a member of the Equity Council. Our Equity Council has three main goals for the semester: sending the mascot, providing advocate, mental health support for every student, and I guess ideally teachers, and creating a behavior system that works for students. Right now, we have one permanent AP on campus, and it just seems like there are barely any adults consistently around. We have heard we are offering 1350 or something to hire a security guard. We would like to increase that rate so we can actually hire someone. We would also like to hire another AP, and we would like APs to work particularly proactively with students instead of reactively punishing them by, for instance, locking almost every restroom. We at Travis Early College High School would like to use the restroom, and we feel respected as we walk through our school. Please, and thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Flores. I'm a parent, and I'm also the co-chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee. I'm calling about item 5.1, the student achievement related to special education. This is only part of the story. As of today, Disability Rights Texas formally asked TEA Commissioner Mike Marass to investigate the practices of evaluation of Austin ISD and/or to install a conservator over the Special Education Department. I'm humbly asking that the trustees consider this offer and consider the outcomes for students that are not represented in the day-to-day, because they haven't been evaluated yet, are not getting services, are not being supported, and are not receiving a free, appropriate public education. Please take action to work with the TEA and with parents to have the Special Education Department be in compliance and serve students. Thank you.
This concludes public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Lugo.
Yeah, I'm hoping that the administration might be able to provide an update at a future meeting or through some other communication method regarding the comments from the Travis Early College High School student, especially around bathrooms. I remember last school year, yeah, so that would be great to get updates in the future.
We'll reach, trustee Lugo, we'll reach out and see if we can understand a little bit more about the concerns from the caller and then provide an update to the board.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Boswell.
Yes, thank you. I'd love a clarification about the way capacity has been calculated for transfers and the whether portables were included at some campuses and not at others, with the Barton Hills family's calling in.
Sure. Trustee Boswell, so a little bit of history here, if that's okay. So prior to 2017, the school district was not consistent in how we calculated capacity. In some areas of Austin, specifically in areas within the Barton Creek watershed, where the impervious cover was limited to 25%, we did allow for portables to be considered as part of the permanent capacity calculation. So that would include Barton Hills as well as Zilker. All other areas, they were not included as part of the calculation. Past, after 2017, as part of the long-range planning process, and it's also been kind of reinforced by way of the 2019 Facilities Master Plan, and then also again in the long-range planning effort, the consensus was that our permanent infrastructure should be based around spaces that support students. And portables, given their age, we have, we had at one point over 600 portables, we're now around 520. They're, the newest one, I think, is 22 years old. And as an organization, we do not believe that portables are the best types of space to support learning. And so because of that, in 2017 and since then, we have not used portables in the calculation for capacity. And so that's been consistent since 2017 and is also part of the foundation of the analysis for the 2022 bond and as well as the 2022 long-range planning process.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Trustee Hunter.
Good evening. I would ask, not really a question or comment, but just some clarification for our community. It sounds like in the Barton Hills and in the Travis comments, there's some concern about staffing. And I know that that's all being looked at, and as soon as possible, if we can communicate to people how we're going to be moving forward and staffing different campuses, it might alleviate some of the concern, or at least let them know what is going to be coming up. We're going to continue to use the same staffing formula, or we're going to be staffing differently? I think that would be beneficial.
Great. Trustee Kaufman.
Just quickly, interim superintendent Segura, I appreciate your response about the student and that you reaching out to contact them to get further information about their concerns. I just want to state that I have confidence in our current administration that when district personnel reach out to students, staff, or families regarding comments they make during public comment, that this is truly a sincere effort to better understand the concerns and recommendations, and is in no way retaliatory or punitive, or in any way meant to discourage making such comments in the future. I appreciate that you're taking that stand.
Absolutely, trustee Kaufman. One of the things I'll tell anybody is, we need to know, we need to understand where we have challenges that we can improve on within an organization and where we get the information from does not matter to me. In fact, I would encourage those to reach out and provide us information so that we can be responsive. So no, absolutely, we're in alignment.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. So, so thank you very much, trustees. And as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So next, we've got the president's report, and I would like to give an update on the board and district work plans. As previously shared, the board held a retreat on January 21st. During that time, we discussed the major work of the superintendent and district over the next six months and major initiatives over the next few years. And this was really inspired by, you know, as all of our work is inspired by our students. And our shift to looking at student data and seeing the rifts in our outcomes and our opportunities for our students really drove, like, we went into this conversation about strategy with that at the forefront. How do we close gaps? How do we make sure that our students have high levels of achievement and well-being? And we thought about what were the levers that were really going to help bring our students there? And so that's what that drew from. And I will say, it was a pretty intense conversation. Following this meeting, the administration has been building out work plans that were based on, I think we started out with eight priority areas, and then it went up to 14. But really, they're doing this work plan that is going to allow us to prioritize truly what we need to do to help our students. And this work plan is going to include milestones and key work to be accomplished for the major priorities. And you all know Mr. Segura. I don't know if you've ever seen one of his Gantt charts when he was our operations chief, but he's really bringing that, transferring that knowledge to this role. So I really appreciate that. During our February 23 regular voting meeting, the district will hold a work session following all voting items to have a discussion on the work plans and major initiatives. And we hope you can join the work session to learn more about the district planning process. And my understanding is, we're going to have key milestones for the staff and then also, like, for the trustees as well, where we're going to come together, correct?
That's absolutely correct, President Singh. The other thing I'd also want to offer and communicate is that within those plans, you'll see the engagement approach as well, so that you can see kind of how all of these initiatives that are running in parallel, how we will engage with our community as well as our staff.
Appreciate that. And we have not really done this kind of joint work planning before, and I think it's going to be really helpful for us to delineate what the, you know, the administration management role is and what the governance board role is, but see how they work together. And my hope is that we are able to then share this with the community in some form so that you all can be informed on our work. I would also like to take a moment to thank all of our staff, who worked so hard last week during the winter storm to ensure our schools were safe and that any building issues were addressed quickly. Austin ISD staff worked tirelessly late last week and over the weekend to remove trees from playgrounds, walkways, and green space where they could, or to rope off that area so it would not create a hazard until it could be properly addressed. Thank you so much to our, to all of you for ensuring our students had a safe and warm place to return to school last Monday, on Monday. So for our families and staff, we also want to ensure that, ensure you that the district is taking the necessary steps to account for the bad weather days. The school district is required by the state to ensure a certain number of instructional minutes each school year. And for this school year, the district had included enough minutes to account for potential bad weather days. And the state of Texas also allows districts to request waivers for any bad weather days after the first two. So at our voting meeting in two weeks, we will consider approval for the administration to submit waivers to the Texas Education Agency for the closures, which we expect to be approved. The district will not be utilizing the February 20th bad weather day. Yay! So this will still be a student and staff holiday for President's Day. We do have a board retreat that night, though. Sorry, y'all. We also fully expect TEA will approve our waiver request, and that the April 7th bad weather day will also stay a student and staff holiday. I'm going to take a moment of privilege to talk a little bit about Black History Month, and I was really honored to be able to participate in the flag raising earlier this week, as well as something that has also never been done in our district was a black table talk that was put on by our historically underutilized business department and other departments in the district. And so I just want to give a big shout out to, let me get, make sure I got her name right, Latoya Edwards and her team. And if I may, can I just take a moment to share some of the things that I heard during this event? We actually had students from across the district that were representing their voice, and they had really candid, heartfelt conversations about race and what we, what their experiences have been and what they want to see. And it's so important for us as leaders in the district to hear that voice. Their voice is the most important in the room, so thank you to the staff for creating that space. But here are some takeaways that I heard in their own voices. Teach about contemporary black heroes, not just MLK and Rosa Parks. Equity is not a handout. Black teachers and coaches have a huge impact. This is a new day. Teachers should be aware of their own biases. One difference between cultural appropriation and cultural appreciation is the person's intention. Social, emotional learning should happen in every class. Neurodivergence is also something to educate people on. We've come a long way, but we still have a lot more to learn and need to keep fighting. Dig into the nuance of black history. The arts are an important way to connect with culture. It's okay to be uncomfortable talking about race. Code-switching is a big thing. And finally, just do better. And so we will take that to heart. I am now going to pass this to Vice President Foster to say a few words as well about Black History Month, in honor of Black History Month.
Well, I guess the first thing I'd say, President Singh, is that it's, one of the things that I most deeply appreciate is when we celebrate the heritage of all of our different groups of students, that you don't just see black folk celebrating, black folk, brown folk celebrating, brown folk, et cetera, et cetera, that rather, when we have our celebrations, you see our communities come together and just celebrate. As we do that, we lean into the particularity of the experience of whatever group of folks we just happen to be celebrating that day. So this is, of course, Black History Month. And one of the things that I'm excited that we've, and this is the collective we over time, without really even acknowledging it fully, we've got a bunch of schools like Aitkins High, Barbara Jordan, Elsie Anderson, Keeling, Hart, Campbell, now I'll say Norman Dash Sims, Sadler Means. Not only are we celebrating really enormous, important black folk, but they're local folk. And I guess my invitation would be for students, teachers, families, community, to just look at the name of your school. And when you look at the name of your school and when you walk through the door, think about what it means. So if you go to Anderson High, you go to Elsie Anderson High, with Elsie Anderson being one generation out of enslavement, to grow up to become a teacher, a principal, a college president, and to have this, this just great career, where of course, for so many years, a school on the east side, but now it's a school that's just another Austin school that just happens to be named after a really awesome person. So this month, let's look at that, and then next month, let's look at some more, and next month's, let's look at some more. Our naming that we proactively engage names our values and is an invitation to possibility. I'm really excited about Black History Month, but I'm really most excited about the diversity of our community and just how we are the tapestry of possibility. So thank you for that invitation to--
Of course. Beautifully said. Can you tell he's a professor? All right, trustee Boswell, do you have a legislative update to share?
Yes, I do, thank you. As of last Friday, over 2,900 bills have been filed in the Texas Legislature. Austin ISD is tracking over 350 bills that relate to schools and our legislative priorities. On Monday, the Senate Finance Committee heard from TEA and the Legislative Budgeting Board regarding the public education portion of the budget. Highlights of the introduced version of the budget bill, such as the $5 billion to cover the cost of current law property tax rate compression and the $9.7 billion for additional property tax relief. The state share of funding for the foundation school program dipped 32.9% in fiscal year '23, but the proposed budget bill is expected to increase the state share to an estimated 43.1% in fiscal year '24 and 42.2% in fiscal year '25. The state share is what comes from state resources, and the local share is what comes from property taxes, district-wide, statewide. Recapture makes up 9% of total maintenance and operations revenue. This year, 241 districts are expected to pay recapture, and that's up from 156 in the previous year, largely because property values have increased so much across our state. Those districts represent almost a third of the state's total average daily attendance, about a third of the students in our state. The committee also discussed how districts have used S or dollars, enrollment declines, recapture, special education savings accounts, which are a form of vouchers, and district fund balances. The Texas House also released committee assignments yesterday. The Public Education Committee in the House will be chaired by Brad Buckley of the Killeen Area. Representative Alma Allen will be vice chair. And Austin Area Representative James Tallerico, who's a former teacher, and Gina Hinajosa, who is a former Austin ISD trustee, were appointed to the Public Education Committee. Finally, Governor Greg Abbott will hold his State of the State address on Thursday, February 16th, at 7:00 PM. During the address, Governor Abbott is expected to lay out his priorities for the 88th legislative session, and we expect that to include priorities about education and education funding. And finally, earlier this week, six trustees, including trustee Gonzalez, trustee Kaufman, trustee Hunter, trustee Whitley Chu, trustee Zapata, and I, went to an advocacy conference in Washington, DC, and met with Representative Greg Cassar, Representative Lloyd Doggett, and staff of Representatives Chip Roy and Mike McCall. There is still time to join the, a new Austin ISD Advisory Board, the Advocacy Advisory Committee. You can submit an application at www.austinisd.org/advisory-bodies. You can also search Austin ISD Advisory Bodies, it will take you to the application if you are interested. And the first meeting was scheduled for February 1st because of the storm. We've moved that meeting to Wednesday, February 22nd, at 5:30 PM. So if you're interested, we hope you will join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Foster.
I just wanted to, so both Representative Tallerico and Representative Hinajosa are now on the Public Education Committee?
Yes.
So that is some local advocacy from some really amazing local folks. I'm really excited to hear that.
Yes, and Tallerico is returning as a committee member, and Representative Hinajosa is new to the committee.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you for that update, and thank you for, our trustees for representing us so well in DC. All right, so tonight, we will have our new superintendent search partner, GR Recruiting, joining us virtually for a brief introduction and overview. I wanted to let you all know that they haven't talked to our whole board yet. This will be the first time that we're all meeting them, and it's also going to be the first time that you're meeting them. So this is like an effort and more transparency, so you're seeing everything happening in real time. The board will also discuss our legal considerations for this search during our executive session. We are currently scheduled to hold a special board meeting on Monday, February 20th, along with GR Recruiting, to discuss the major milestones of the search part, of the search process. Our discussion will include stakeholder and community engagement around our process, the building of a superintendent profile, and potential models that can be used. Again, I want to thank our, the folks who are on our Superintendent Search Firm Committee, who did meet with GR and their staff and several others who applied to represent AISD in this important task. And I have had an opportunity to speak with them, and I'm really pleased with the choice, so thank you all. As always, the public can learn more about the superintendent search, including finding the upcoming events once published, at www.austinisd.org/board/superintendent-search. So, our next item is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement. Tonight, we will discuss scorecard items 1.1 and 1.2, which relate to special education growth, middle-of-year map reading, and math. So, Mr. Segura, take it away.
Thank you, President Singh. I'd like to invite Dr. Robinett, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, and her team up to provide this update.
I have, just need a clarification. We are looking at beginning-of-the-year data or middle-of-the-year data?
We're going to be looking at the actual, the growth--
Okay.
--from beginning to middle, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you for that clarification question. Good evening, interim superintendent Segura, trustees, President Singh. Thank you for allowing us to join you this evening to talk about map growth for reading for middle-of-the-year. I think there may have been some confusion, trustee Hunter, in the way the attachments might have been named. So, you know, as a point of transparency, I think I understand maybe where your question is coming from, but we are looking at map, middle-of-the-year growth data. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education. This is not the entirety of our team, because the team in AISD that is working to support our students includes all of us. And you'll notice, I want to, my colleagues who are in partnership around this, Dr. Susie Vialpando over multilingual education and other student programs, Dr. Susan Diaz in the Office of Academics. Alongside me have our interim executive director, Dr. Cherry Lee, who serves as an interim executive director over instructional delivery and inclusion. We know that there is both a responsive need for the community, including things that were brought forward by a commenter this evening, but also a critically important role and responsibility that came from our reporting to sustain and move momentum in transforming our instructional programming for our district and for our students, first and foremost. Most privileged this evening to have alongside me and Dr. Teresa Rochegill, who-- Most privileged this evening to have alongside me and Dr. Teresa Rochegill, who is with us as well, our Executive Director over operations and compliance and evaluations. But very privileged to be with you this evening alongside Dr. Frances Stetson, who is, as you all are aware, completed the evaluation report for our students with disabilities, but also of instructional programming here in Austin ISD that many of you, and I hope our community overall, continues to be familiar with, which is sort of a guiding document for us in moving work forward on behalf of our students. So Dr. Stetson did not come strictly for this meeting this evening. She actually has been a part of some partnership work that we have been doing and including today with our overall team as a part of shared commitment and responsibility for our students and our learners. So we're here to report on Scorecard Goal 1, and as you're aware, that students receiving, it's around students receiving special education services, demonstrating achievement on the state assessment in all grade subjects at the MEATs grade level, and ultimately by August of 2026 at 60%. I think I'm supposed to click for myself, so we're going to go for that. All right. I'd like to orient you to Scorecard Goal 1, the end-of-year targets for this school year. You'll notice that our, when we're measuring the goal and progress measures for that, we're specifically looking at the tool that we use, are around reading map assessments and mathematics map assessments in the area of growth. We want to focus on growth for our students because it tends to be predictive, not entirely so, but we want to ensure that our students are growing and accelerating towards overall achievement. But they are two different things for our students. So you see by the end of the year, our target for, in the area of reading will be 53%, and our target at the end of year for mathematics will be 56%. So taking a look at that, I'd like to bring you into this scorecard measure. I want to point out that, again, that the goal and progress measures are not specifically aligned to the goal, however, again, predictive to be focusing on growth, but it is measuring two different things. The desire for us is to value growth as measured by the map from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and so we're sort of looking at that midpoint gut check, if you will. I want to zoom in a bit to determine how we're tracking relative to our state. You're familiar, many of you, with this particular graphic, which is literally just taking you through the, the reporting that's provided online for you as well from the taper. And so you can see where Austin ISD, the blue line, is tracking relative to the state. Let me just say that you can see that 26% of students receiving special education services or with disabilities here in Austin ISD are at the MEATs grade level or above from the prior year taper, the 21-22 taper. That is slightly above the state, but that is in neither case anywhere near the level of excellence that we need to have for our students. Dr. Stetson has brought to our attention, and you're aware of the research of the Hessinger Report, that we know that our students can be successful in progressing towards grade-level standards and mastery, 90% of them if we provide the right supports and structures for them. That likewise means we need to provide the right support structures, training, and development for our teachers and staff to feel confident and competent in supporting them as well. So in looking that, at that data, I want you to see the relative comparison on overall performance. Now, this is the Scorecard Goal 1, where we're tracking towards actual achievement, not necessarily the goal and progress measures, but over the course of the year, you know that, you can see the blue bar there is where we're shooting for that 60% by 2026 for our students at MEATs grade level or above for students receiving special education services. And you can see the blue bar really depicts where we were for Austin ISD in 2018. You can see at 54%, you saw a dip then that time, that 19-20 not calculated, and then 20-20, 20-21, when students were starting to return. And then you see there is some sort of restoring back to a period of time, but that is nowhere where we want to be. It is above where our state is, both of those areas for all students, but our goal is not to be in comparison to the state. Our, our goal is to, to track and show the possibilities and the opportunities that we are committed to for our students. We likewise bring this forward because we know that high-quality Tier 1 instruction for all students and addressing the needs on the front end of our learners really is going to lift those boats overall, not only for the green bar, which is Austin ISD Special Education relative to the yellow bar, which is the state, but it likewise will lift overall our student performance, and that's a priority that we have as a system. And the next slide, when you can see our middle-of-the-year data, that's the winter, beginning-of-the-year data to the middle-of-the-year data, and there are some, some caveats for how that's determined. Those are, those asterisks are provided for you on the screen and in the reporting, but this is specifically related to students who were tested in, in English from the fall boy, or beginning of the year, and then likewise to the middle-of-the-year. One of the things I've been informed of and had some clarity around is, when you see the reporting of all of the student categories, this may be a question that later emerges, they take the best of for students who are dual-language. Students may be testing in, in both languages for respective areas, and I don't want to get too far into that, but that's just something to think about in the way that's reflected in the overall reporting for the Scorecard Goal as currently written. So let's take a look and seeing where we're tracking, that bottom right-hand corner shows that in the area of reading for goal progress measure, 1.1 for reading, that we are tracking about 9% off, or not about, we're tracking 9% off our end-of-year target at this point in time. And so I want to orient you that you're looking at this as a relative comparison for all students, kindergarten through eighth grade. That's what MAP does allow us to sort of gauge in terms of progress. And then all of our student categories or our student groups, African-American, Latino, Hispanic, white, and emergent bilingual, and then special education, which is what we're reporting on this evening. You'll have subsequent reports in the coming, I think at the end of this month and the following month, around some different grade levels and in our middle schools as well, that will allow us to peel that back a bit further. But in looking at special education specifically, and students receiving those services, you can see that we're about 9% off where we are for end-of-year. I do want to bring forward the part of a desire around a press for continuing to strengthen, strengthen our instructional core, as you can see where all students are relative to that same type of goal. And so we have some work to do overall as a system. That's why this is not a specific departmental priority, it's a system priority, it's a, it's a district priority for all of our students. So in terms of that, you can see that 44% of our students receiving special education services at the middle-of-the-year met their projected growth target in reading, and then likewise in the student categories of those experiencing poverty, as well as those who are not at this point in time. Next slide. Oh, that's me, I'm talking to myself. In the area of goal point, progress measure math as well, there is a sort of a similar spacing off of our end-of-year target, if you will, and so our students receiving services are at 47% of them met their middle-of-the-year growth target. We, we've seen some trends in the past, as well as some slight dips in the middle-of-the-year, and then, and then tracking along with more sustained momentum towards the end of the year, and that's some of the spiraling and some adjustments that we'll be making as well, that I'll be reporting on. But we are about 9% off, we're 9% off of that target. Let me delve in a little further. So this is specifically our students receiving special education services, and then likewise looking at it across student groups. So we're going to zoom in a bit further into this category. When analyzing the data by student groups, you certainly can read the data there on this slide, but you can notice that overall, we have 44% of our students, as mentioned from the prior slide, but that we have among student groups a 7 to 10 percentage point variance in performance of our students receiving services, which includes white students receiving special education services, that the 50% of them or more have, have met their fall to, to winter growth target, and then that emergent bilingual students is, is the category at 40%, and then the, the level of, the level of that growth in between for the respective groups. And taking a look at, at math, GPM, our goal progress measure 1.2, again, the same thing that we're looking at is our special education students overall, and then looking at the respective student groups, and there's a 5 to 7 percentage point variance among performance. And so anytime we do equity auditing and, and thinking about our performance overall, we have to peel back and, and consider where are the biases in place, where are the curriculum adjustments that need to be made, where are the supports that need to be made, not only in our, in specially-designed classes, but in our general education-supporting classes for all of our students, and that's what we're examining and working to support as a team. So many of you have seen the, sort of the what's next, or what's been going on, and so although we'll be peeling back some additional nuggets or pieces of things that have been happening, we've put it into sort of three broader categories, several of these items should be connected to things that you, that you have seen previously, because this is part of an ongoing plan for implementation and support, and all of these items are not strictly connected to our area of our special education department. It's that shared ownership. So you see the components around leadership vision and systems, the collaboration pieces that have been intentional in nature, not only getting in the same room, sharing same, the same reports and research, and seeking to understand how to really braid together support for our teachers, our staff members, and create an understanding among our own team members, that really speaks to what Dr. Stetson will probably get to, an aspect in her reporting of starting to address and breaking down silos that were pretty existent in our system, and then likewise experienced that way in our classrooms. And so we've got great work and opportunities to, to address in that area. We've been working quite a bit around our process improvement around learning culture and building the supports around that, and you'll see around different components around instruction and capacity building that really started with our summer institute and have continued throughout this time around multi-tiered systems of support and response to intervention as well. I'd like to, with your permission, kind of blow up one of those, or examine one of those with a bit more detail, and then we can, can peel back if you have questions on the other respective areas about what that looks like and sounds like. But in the spirit of time, I want you to be able to ask the questions of the team members who are here this evening as well. So we're trying to do some proactive, we're not trying to do, we're doing some proactive pieces, but we know that well-trained, well-supervised individuals with role clarity are going to, are going to be key to our success, and so part of that is coming to some of that common understanding, first and foremost as a team, and layering that on in terms of support in our classrooms as well. So the area I'd like to bring in further, I think it turned, is around our leadership vision and systems. And so I'd like to talk a bit about, like, what does that mean, ongoing-to-date, and then how does that shift into both immediate and, and the next cadence until we come to you again, our further next steps that are in process? With that in mind, I have the privilege to have with us, it says ongoing-to-date, some connections with Stetson and Associates, not only in examining where are some things that we could, we should address as a district in their, in their original reporting, but also with some key strategies, tools, and some self-examination for us to implement those recommendations that right now are, have been more aspirational in nature for our district, and we're moving towards seeking to operationalize those with our efforts. So that means for the next step, she'll talk about what's happening currently, and I appreciate you being here, Dr. Stetson, to share a bit about that.
I'm glad to be here. It's good to see you all again. You know, when I was, oh, sorry. And when I was here last, I remember we talked about two levels. There's district-wide systems issues, and then there is department-specific in special education, in this case that we're talking about. So I'm really pleased to tell all of you that, that we've really begun, and especially after the first of the year, very robust efforts to, to train leaders, to continue the training that we began last summer for the principals, and we, that was really to acquaint them with the results of the study, but to also say, what does that mean for you as a principal? If these were the findings, then what are the actions that need to be taken at a school level to really actualize some of the goals that were set? And so one thing I think has been, I feel really, I'm patting myself on the back tonight because this is the midpoint. We had the mid, and today, and they're coming tomorrow, but we, we proposed that this district would identify the individuals that are already in your payroll and that are playing a role of instructional coach, or behavior coach, or, or what have you, that are in, in the various departments, special education, the multilingual department, curriculum and instruction, all across. Remember, we were moving out of silos and into cross-collaboration, and we identified those individuals, and we brought them in this fall, and we had two goals for them, to say, you're, we don't want to, we want to actually enrich and expand, in some sense, the goals you're currently playing. How, when you're in those classrooms and the schools, how can the role you currently have add value and add more support to teachers and to principals, so that you're very strong in, and we were focused on two things, coaching skills, because those are, there's very, I think we all know that, we threw the word, the word coaching around for years, and now there's a whole curriculum around and a whole set of skills that really effective coaches need to have. So we worked on that, and then we've also, one of the pieces, I know when you looked at your student data, the, the question that always comes to our minds is therefore, what do we do about it? What, what, how do we turn that around? And so the second emphasis with these folks that in your district already play the role of coaches, is that of, of increasing their, their knowledge of really effective research-based strategies that teachers can easily implement, that don't really overburden the teacher, but yet in, in, enrich the impact of instruction. So we worked on those two content pieces, better be a stronger coach and having more tools in your kit to share with teachers. We, actually, that number came to 125 people when we identified that, and that's, think about that, and how impressive that is as part of your army, or a part of what you have as resources to, to enrich their roles. So we had a, had a good day. It was an interesting day. I think anytime you talk to a, a group about adjusting or expanding a role in the sense of, of, I think in this case, being really strong instructional leaders, it was a really good day. It was a day of a lot of, of good conversation. But at that point, I think after that, and I have to say that Mr. Segura contacted me and said that he wanted me to come in, he was brand-new in the role, and would we, would we go over in-depth? And I have to say, when he says in-depth, he really means it. It was a four-hour meeting that went back into the, the evaluation report, which he had highlighted and marked and paginated, and to really understand in that first meeting what the systems change issues or strategies were. So from that, it's been very exciting to me, because then the next meeting, he brought in the cabinet, and we, we really worked with the cabinet about what is the systems change work in order to make changes for youngsters in a really positive way. It was a very exciting day for me. I, I, we had the group really think about what those big rocks are that need to be accomplished, and then we started something very, very important, and that is, starting today, we are launching the foundational training that we found across multiple school districts and states across the country, really result in systems change that improves, I'm going to say, instructional outcomes for diverse learners, all learners. And with that, it's called Step-by-Step. It's foundational. And in, in our opinion, it's very respectful to bring in those coaches back in first. If they hear about this after the fact that we've done the team training for principals and teachers, that's not a really good use of their time. So they've come in for today and tomorrow, so that they have the advanced look at that content, and, and, and actually help inform us about some of the special issues for Austin. I would say that we have, in terms of aggressive and, and I think very impressive steps forward, now that these people are trained within two days to know the major strategies that are going to really affect improved student outcomes, we actually had, you, with 120 schools, perhaps I'm rounding up or down, but that's what number I'll use, we'd originally thought we would train half of them this spring and the other half over the summer. And so when we had another one of those meetings about where are we now and what training needs to happen, we are actually accelerating that schedule, so that every school will have had that training by the end of the spring. And so our preferred, it's really exciting, because can you imagine in just a few months what will- what that means? It's required for the principal and a few of their teachers, it means in a very few months, you're going to have that common vision and that common vocabulary that was noted in our study of your district that was just missing. And so that in a very short period of time. So we are using your vertical teams as the focus, because in our experience, you don't want to group people by just elementary, middle, and high, you want those vertical teams. So we have 12 dates, sets of dates, to make it easier on the school, and I know it's not ever easy, but with the personnel issues, we're decided to train, let's say, the first group, our vertical team, on a Monday, and then the next Monday, so they cannot have to be two days out of the school, it'd give them a chance to regroup. And not only will they have the training, but then, as you all would guess, as good as training is, it doesn't really often take it to the actual implementation level. You need to come back and play with it in your own school and apply those strategies. So there will be some dates on the wall as we conduct each of these trainings, for them to select, the principal can select the best date for his school or her school to receive an onsite technical assistance day, where the teachers and the principal can say, out of all we learned, these are the areas where we feel like we'd really need to help, you help operationalize it. And so that's a lot in a hurry, and it's really exciting to me to see the way this district has grabbed this and is moving with it. Finally, I would share that while all of that is district-wide, anti-silo, very critical for changing the culture toward diversity in many ways, there's still some work, of course, deep work in your department about student evaluations, the backlog, the issues that you know in front of you. And we picked three out of the report that, in our opinion, felt that it would be the best to bring forward. So I've selected the most experienced people on my staff, who have been former special education directors or curriculum directors, and we are, this spring, having working sessions with the actual department staff themselves on systems for student evaluations, so that we have that working well, a system where we're really looking at the quality standards. You might recall when I was here, I said I had some real concern about what was happening in the individual classrooms, especially for unique populations. And then the third one is improving the quality of IEPs for individual kids, so that you see stronger success for students. And I would leave you with a quote that I wrote down this morning. In the session, we'd mixed the teams, they came from all these departments that you have, these are the coaches, the 125 people, and they didn't sit together in a clump, they were scattered across different departments. And at one point, and I thought, oh, I have to write that down if I have a chance to share it with you, the, a person in the back of the room raised their hand and said, I feel like I'm in a spiritual space. She said, we never talked to each other across departments, and said that we are co-creating strategies that benefit all kids. So I just like, you know, that's exactly what you're after, that's, and I feel like it's changing, it's helping change that culture and getting, having us much more effective for diverse learners. So it's the first few steps, but thank you for your attention and your support of this work.
Thank you, Dr. Stetson. So that's some of the things that have been ongoing to date with our connection with Stetson and Associates for their support and the steps, but I want you to know that that is likewise braided within a broader picture, that you'll hear probably more about in some upcoming conversations, but we have likewise been trying to connect across our teams around response to intervention and having stronger MTSS and support processes, and likewise have been building that around a culture of professional learning with, again, beginning with a baseline across our own team members within our system, to be able to, these are our folks who are going out and supporting, these are folks leading folks going out and supporting, these are folks who will build the capacity if there is an increase at a point in time of campus-based instructional coaches, to really braid together our district pieces. And so we will be continuing those monthly learning sessions, not only across academics in the areas for special education we're referencing this evening, but likewise across the other areas. I want to finish off and share, when we're taking a look at the data, we always want to look at, and this has been a request of the board, one of the next steps for us, and Mr. Hicks apologized, he was intending to be with us this evening, but asked that we share, what, how we're continuing to gather and share areas of strength and areas of growth that we see among the data, and that's beginning to sort of examine it and learn from our folks who are in our settings about what's working and what is causing those beneficial outcomes, and then what are areas that we can provide better support. And so just a few of the campuses that you will certainly see in the connection of that in the student data particularly related to reading, who had some substantial growth for the students receiving services, were Zavala, Pleasant Hill, Palm, Travis Heights, Summit, and Bedecheck at Middle School, that's not all-inclusive, but we did reach out, they were to, they were to come at one point, the ice storm has changed some things, we've done some surveying, so thank you for your patience around that. But to really validate that culture of focusing on growth and development, and Dr. Lee can share with you what Mr. Hicks had intended, very briefly, just some of the, some of the changes and strengths that they noted, that they're trying to work on. You'll notice that they're not only doing something for students with receiving services, but they are bringing them first as general education students first into the conversations, the structures, the growth and design that they've put in place at their campuses.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Robinett, and thank you for having me here tonight. I do want to say that some of the shifts and changes that the campuses noted were well-aligned with the presentation by Dr. Stetson, and that's because they're all evidence-based practices, and these campuses are implementing them as well. So some of the things that the campuses noted that, in general, was that they are adding in collaborative planning time with special education teachers and general education teachers during this PLC time, and that the PLCs are meeting at least twice weekly, and that's been really important for the sped teachers and the gen ed teachers to be able to plan for student success. Another focus that was captured is that there was a focus on language and literacy, especially in early reading, and that inclusion of phonics, phonemic awareness, high-frequency word instruction, reading fluency was all prioritized, and was really increasing student success in reading. Folks also noticed a campus-wide approach to goal-setting, not only at individual teacher level, but at grade levels, and also with students themselves. Data assessment was a big piece, and campuses tracking their own data and really encouraging students to track their own growth as well was a common theme. So really, overall, lots to celebrate in the area of reading at these campuses, and again, it's well-aligned with Dr. Stetson.
So we've gone a bit more in-depth on a couple of these than perhaps we intended originally, so we will go ahead and conclude and leave it to you as trustees, if we may, for any additional interim superintendent comments or questions from you as a board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and it's good to see you again, Dr. Stetson. So trustees, now is the time for us to ask questions on the current vision. Our goal tonight is monitoring and ensuring our reality matches the vision presented. When asking questions, we should try to focus on the data presented, asking questions about who, what, why, and how. So I'm sure you all have some questions, who would like to go first?
Trustee Lugo.
Thank you all for the presentation, and hopefully for any families or students or folks out there who are listening, like, what's coming across to me is that there's a real, a couple of things, one, a real dedication to kind of move us toward progress, and having that progress be purposeful, strategic, evidence-based, and systemic. So I just really wanted to thank you all for that work and all the folks from administration down. The other thing, there's kind of two questions, I'll ask this one first, so, you know, we're looking ahead to the budget for the upcoming school year, and I think I may have asked this in previous meetings, but if there is any response that can be given, you know, what kind of resources or investments might the district need to make, and how is that information kind of bubbling up to the surface, right? Because it's not always about more money, sometimes it's about where resources or money is placed, so, any thoughts that you all might have?
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the validation of, we're not near that North Star yet, trustee Lugo, and it is systemic work. And I can say that part of it is building, it is not lost on us as a team, some of the challenges that have been come, we're not immune as a district to vacancy challenges and other staffing pieces, and some of that's connected to strong working conditions and people feeling more and more competent about being able to serve the needs of our students. First, we had to level set with who's here, so that whoever's providing support in our campuses can start to braid together and demystify like what has been a siloed experience for them. So continuing to invest in the coaching support that's here across departments, you'll notice that Dr. Lee is here as an interim executive director of instructional delivery and inclusion. We're naming that, we need to name that as a team, so that that is not lost in the momentum moving forward. When we sometimes get mired into the bigger pieces, that's new, that's connected to sort of how we're redesigned as our department, so thank you for that support related to that. But likewise, we know that there has been some deliberation around instructional coaching and building up the instructional coaching framework, which is very much connected to, I hope, where our district is examining those next steps, but in any and all cases, we have an opportunity to build the collective strength and understanding of those instructional coaches, much like we're trying to do for our own team members, to have that braid through the system. So that takes time, that takes investment in additional training, and that is not a one-and-done piece, because Dr. Stetson has mentioned multiple years with us, appreciate that partnership over time. Part of that is to eventually fade where we can self-sustain, right? And that's the same thing with, we, it is not yet in the oxygen that we breathe in terms of breaking down those pieces. So instructional coaching support, building that additional framework, I appreciate very much, interim superintendent Segura sort of thinking about what is the path forward and where are the resources, and how do we make those things happen? You all know that we, I appreciated very much the things you validated, and providing not only strong supports for our teachers serving special education students, but likewise our related service providers, and being very competitive and keeping in the market, including for evaluators, which has been something that has been a challenging piece for our district. So I think the most informed thing is in making those decisions and prioritization, I would just ask is, I appreciate the board seeing this as a big picture, and not departmental specific, but really better meeting the needs of all of our kids. So as you're deliberating that in the budget process, we want to put the right things on the plates for our folks, and the right supports on the plates of our folks to the extent that we can. And when we have a strong, healthy, well-trained, committed, supported workforce that are likewise mindset-wise committed to our students, then that's, that's obviously, it's really big picture, but those are some of the pieces. So I want to thank you for that, and likewise, thank you all for deliberating intentional work around that instructional coaching piece, and building the capacity of not only our specialists, but any campus-based personnel who are going to see all students as our students.
That's great, thank you for that. And then, I'm not really sure how to articulate this next question, so hopefully you'll get the gist. I'm kind of interested in hearing any kind of information or update, whether it's, you know, well, we have a plan that's two years out, or 18 months out, whatever the timeline might be, if there is one, but looking at how the district can provide special education to emergent English language learners, because I know that historically that that hasn't always been delivered with fidelity in terms of really serving the whole child, so any thoughts on that would be great.
So I can take that, trustee Lugo, one of the things that we're doing, and I want to certainly give just such appreciation to the team here, but also the academic team and the multilingual team, because they are all the academic team. None of them can do their work without the others. And so what we're laying out now is a comprehensive plan, it is a 24-to-36-month plan. We are building it out, the goal is actually, in the conversation, the presentation we have with trustees here in a couple of weeks, is to lay out the framework for it. You'll see a lot more detail and granularity in the first probably 12 months opposed to 36, but we are laying all of that out, and you'll see how, you'll see within it the intentionality and connectivity between all of the systems, and just kind of seeing how complex it is. And that's one of the things that we've been doing over the last several weeks, is recognizing this system needs to be improved, and it cannot be done overnight. So it's, we're working hard, you'll have something in a couple of weeks, we're laying it all out, but these folks, this entire team is working very hard, so thank you for that question, but yes, we're working on it.
So, three quick things, first of all, thank you, because 24-to-36-month plans, like, that is, these things did not happen overnight, and it will not take an overnight solution.
Thank you.
So, I'm so excited about that. And anytime you say the system needs work or systemic change, that, music to my ears, because that's really, it's not these like putting fires out, right, it's really looking at, what, where's the kindling? Like, what, how, right?
Training.
Yeah, and then the third thing, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm going to go ahead and say it, so for anybody who applies for the superintendent position, please remember to think systemically and think holistically, and like, really looking at the organizational culture, and it's, I just see such a difference in the last, how long have you been, a month and a half? Like, thank you.
Thirty days.
All of y'all, all of you, yeah, you're like, well, actually. So thank all of y'all, thank you so much for hanging in there.
Thank you. Other trustees? Trustee Whitley Chu.
Yeah, thank you so much for this big overview of the systematic things going on, but, you know, I'm a teacher, I'm a practitioner, and I'm a parent, and so what is going to happen right now for our students currently receiving special education services for now, for the end of the year, to increase that level of support? So I am excited to hear about looking at campuses that had really good growth and seeing what they're doing. What can we do nimbly, quickly, to help those kiddos? Because that's what we do every day in the classroom as teachers, is we're doing things quickly. So what supports can we give to those teachers to support those students?
Thank you for that question, trustee Whitley Chu, and, well, I would need to look at it myself. So some of the pieces we've put into places is to try and to build that capacity in our professional learning, et cetera, for our teachers. So you know, I think you all may know, this is the, just as a baseline, the first year that, at least since I've, that I recall in my time with the district, that we started to build in even courses for general education teachers and supporting students with disabilities. It does, those, that's the first time that that's been part of a requirement. I'd like to move from the word requirement, that it starts being built into the nature of our system. We've put some tools and resources that are part of the planning process for MTSS and for, like, I'm sorry, multi-tiered systems of supports, as well as sort of the PLC learning process, and then we've been sending out, because we've moved into learning communities this year, our team members are out across the board, those that we have available across academic learning specialists, multilingual support specialist team members, our own coordinators and specialists on campuses, four days a week, both providing advising and sort of that planning process to the extent that that's the case, participating in coaching and guiding in that professional, the professional learning community process, and then helping to build sort of that backwards design for support, and then there are intentional needs that need to be addressed in a more accelerated fashion for specific student cases, and then likewise, we go in to provide that additional support. It is sometimes stretched pretty thin to be very transparent with you, but that's It is sometimes stretched pretty thin to be very transparent with you, but that's part of those pieces. And then we are likewise looking at and examining with the curriculum team, I'm sorry, our academics team overall, where there are some other components that we need to build into our materials and our redesign for right now. And then in the future, spiraling or otherwise to put the right tools and resources so that people can sort of continue to fortify and strengthen the instruction for kids and likewise feel confident in doing so. So, I'm not trying to be sort of blurred in those lines, but it is part of that systemic work. I will say that there was just for the middle of the year, for any of our beginning teachers, it was, any of our novice teachers, it was avail to them sort of a middle-of-the-year touch point, continuing to see through the professional learning team in partnership with a variety of our teams where folks need some additional support and where they can continue to grow. It was pretty well-attended as well. But that's something that we're continuing to work with our principals, with our instructional staff to sort of hear Dr. Diaz, Dr. Villa Pondo, and our team where we might need to go. And we do have to shift as well. I don't know if you have anything else to add? Probably so, right? Not to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, just a few things. So, I will say that we do have specialists on our team that can go out to campuses and are going out to campuses to train teachers on specific reading intervention programs. We also provide the materials and supplies for that. We can also meet with small groups of teachers at the campus, grade levels, or, you know, certain teachers who are providing intervention, or general education teachers to talk about accommodations, you know, what, how to implement those accommodations on students 504, special education plans. Another thing that we offer and we are, you know, currently doing is helping teachers get connected with Learning Ally, which is an audible book program that's free for students that have reading challenges, reading disability, that may be blind or visually impaired, or somehow physically challenged and have difficulties, you know, actually accessing print. So, that is a free program for any student of Texas, and we're in partnership with the Texas Education Agency and Learning Ally to implement that program. I just wanted to point out some additional offerings. These are both for parents and for teachers. But our parent power hour, which I'm calling a parent plus power hour, is going to be February 3rd, and we have Dan, excuse me, February 23rd, and we have Dan St. Romaine speaking. He is an educational consultant right here from Texas, and he's going to be talking about accentuating student assets and long-term goal setting. He's going to be back on March 30th, and he's going to be talking about avoiding power struggles. And this is appropriate for families and parents and teachers alike. So, those are two, you know, learning opportunities for families. We also are offering a specific training on guardianship on March the 28th. That'll be virtual, provided in both English and Spanish, and we're partnering with our parents' support specialist on that. That's a virtual training. And the Dan St. Romaine is virtual as well. And all the links for that information are on our website. And we'll also send that out in our Principals Weekly for principals to share with families.
One of the things we've been trying to do, trustee Whitley Chu, is likewise, anytime we have these pieces builded into our repository of ongoing professional learning pieces, sometimes people are also saturated at a point in time that they can only take in, you've got to practice. If professional learning and just adult learning theory, you have to have time to practice and apply and try things out. And I don't mean in an experimental way, but to really see what's working and what isn't. And so, that's why a culture of a professional learning community, not necessarily just a structure or the questions, but a culture that really is sustaining and building that with regular practice, with our folks in there listening in and helping to coach up alongside principals and other colleagues is likewise critically important. So, we're continuing to work towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Zapata.
Thank you again for all the amazing work that you all are doing. And forgive me if you might have said this already, but I'm trying to understand. So, when you're doing professional development with, you said, general and sped teachers, is that, does that include helping them understand what qualifies to refer to sped?
Yeah, thanks for asking that question. So, several things. It definitely includes professional learning and growth around strong tier-one instruction, around the disability categories, around what is good progress monitoring for students and when it's appropriate. You know, if a student has particular needs, yes, qualifying, referring. We've revamped, gosh, just since July, and made more transparent to folks sort of the referral process. In partnership on the instruction section that I didn't go to into too much detail, is we're working in partnership also with our MTSS team where we have sort of high, we're looking at sort of referral rates and then likewise seeing, do people understand? How can we support them? What do they know for the elements? So, absolutely, that's part of it as well. And that's been for all of our principals, that's all of our assistant principals, and it's likewise part of the process for our teachers in what they call child study teams or CST teams in terms of those reference.
Trustee Gonzalez, did you have a question?
Yes.
So, thank you. I'll first start with something that Dr. Stetson said about professional development and coaching. And I was very fortunate, my mother was a teacher in the district for 36 years, and so I had a coach that I could call up any time of night and say, hey, I'm having trouble with this thing, or whatever, you know, that it was. And so, I think having someone around, especially even better, that can do real-time in the classroom as it's happening, is really excellent. You mentioned the step-by-step training. Is the, will the district, maybe this question's not for you, but can we track which teachers have gone through that training so that we can know kind of on a campus level, if there's this profile that we're aspiring towards, that our teachers have been through this series of professional development? How many teachers have completed that series on each campus? I think about, I was an avid teacher, and so I know when a school is working towards becoming a national demonstration campus, you have a series of professional development in the five different, you know, in the WICER domains to know, you know, how well professionally developed is my campus in the avid model. So, is that something that we can track, or is it already on your radar?
I can respond to that, trustee Gonzalez. So, absolutely, whenever we provide professional development and any type of training, we can track that. It goes through our Human Capital Division. Brandy Hosack, our chief of Human Capital, is the one that oversees the documentation and the kind of data gathering associated with that. We can, you know, work with the board and identify different ways to present that information. And then as a team, figure out, you know, like, what is the metric we want to measure? And then how are we going to track it so that over time, we know that we're actually getting to where we want to be campus by campus?
Yes.
But absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple of other questions regarding the data itself. I noticed that Mendez was not included on the reading or the math. I know that when we got a presentation from Third Future in December, that data was also not disaggregated in the way that maybe I was expecting. So, I was wondering if in the future, it would be possible to have Mendez included so that it can be compared to the other campuses. My other question regarding the data, why don't we include data for high school students? I noticed that there's elementary and middle school data.
That, if I can answer the second question.
Sure.
So, map growth is specifically for kindergarten through eighth grade, and so that's part of it. I think that there have been some cases. No, it does go, it goes higher. We don't currently use that. Go ahead, Dr. Diaz.
I corrected myself after I started. I was like, no, wait, it does go higher. So, sorry. So, I-
Dr. Diaz.
I'm Dr. Diaz. And I was in Austin, and then I was in San Antonio, and now I'm back in Austin. So, in northeast of the district I was formerly in, we decided to do K-8 map growth. And then the high schools kind of asked us, like, well, we want to do this too. So, we tried it out for a couple of years there, and we just didn't get good data on it. By that point, some of the kids feel that they've been overly tested for many years. And also, when they get to that age of development, there's not a lot of growth that you will see in the data. So, more of that happens when they're in their early adolescence. And so, the data that we received from administering map growth with high school students was just, it wasn't very helpful.
Thank you. I, the reason I'm asking is because I'm thinking, as someone who was in high school and middle school, students that are recently arrived in the country, students with significant eruptions in formal education, I would like to see their growth, like in early, you know, foundational literacy. And I don't know how, we know how they're doing, you know? But I appreciate the insight that you provided.
And we can look into getting specific licenses for cases like that, maybe not doing it as an entire, you know, system or grade level, but doing it with, you know, within our ESOL classes.
No, I mean, I take your point. I don't want to add another test to the calendar of what's, I don't, nobody quote me, you know? No, not at all. But thank you, I appreciate that. And then the other question regarding the data itself, I'd be interested to see disaggregated at the campuses that have magnet programs, how special education students are doing that are enrolled in the magnet program versus those that are in the comprehensive, you know, the neighborhood school. I have some other questions, but I feel like I've already taken some time, so. Dr. Kaufman said keep going, so. The third set, I guess, is about how we're, how we know, I mean, I see it, you've got it broken down by economically disadvantaged versus not. I want to get even, you know, more detailed in that. Would it be possible for us to know the crossover for students that qualify for McKinney-Vento Services and are also special education? What does their performance look like? The, I mean, looking at the campus data, I want to know how many of these campuses that are outliers in either positive or negative ways, what their parent support specialists are like? Do they have a parent support specialist? What, you know, things like that, kind of, we're talking about community engagement later. But, and all that is just kind of in the effort to know, like Maslow before Bloom. How are we meeting the foundational needs of those students before we're measuring the academic outcomes? And related to, I guess, the training point earlier, but in a different way, what percentage of the teachers on those campuses have received trauma-informed care? And that's it.
Were you next, Dr. Kaufman? Okay, trustee Hunter.
No, my mic's going to be quick. Oh, my mic's so long, that's not good. I want to start with comments, and then I want to, I want to ask my two questions that I have. We use a lot of words in this room, a lot of words in this room. Plain folk don't care. They just don't. Why can't my kid read? I have the privilege of looking at all of this data through three filters. One, I'm a parent of a child who receives special education services in Austin ISD and graduated. I'm a teacher, who's a teacher of record in an inclusion class and worked with an inclusion teacher. And I'm a trustee who actually can see behind the curtain of all of what's going on. And I've been in those rooms, and we're twisted up over what's happening in special education. That's not getting through. What it looks like from the outside, and I guess that'll be later a communication piece, is that we're just going around and around, and we come in here and we sit and we do the same thing. That's the way it looked to me when I was on that side of this dais. I now know that that's not what's happening because I'm up here at 1:00, when they're up here at 1:00. And I'm up here on Saturday, when they're up here on Saturday. We have got to convey to people where we are. As much as transparent as we can have, we have got to do it, and we have to have them on side. Because right now, we're at loggerheads because they think we don't care. We know we do care, and we're working as hard as we can. If they could see, we look like ducks under here, literally, just swimming as fast as we can. And so, I really think a big part of the partnership that we need to have so that we can move forward is with all, in all of those areas. To trustee Zapata's point, we have got to have the, we can't keep having noobs in our classroom that don't understand what's going on culturally, that, because that slows the system down. Candace is up out of her seat and she's talking and she's playing. At Candace's house, that's called Monday morning. It's, it might be a cultural thing, right? It might be, and it's like, well, let's put, let's refer her because there's obviously something wrong because she doesn't fit the statistical belief of what I think should happen in a classroom, right? We've got to make sure that's being done because while we're trying to fix it over here, it's piling up over here because, I mean, people don't get it. So, however we can do that, I know y'all are working, I know you're doing it. We just got to get it conveyed out. There were some, things were said, and I need some clarification because to my understanding, these things don't exist. But they don't, not that they don't exist, they don't exist in the way that we purely think they exist. So, we talked about instructional coaches. Am I, you might have to come up and get in this. It's my understanding that we do not have instructional coaches as FTEs on-campus based, that those are people who are teaching classes, who are filling that role as department chairs and instructional coaches. True or false? Or not true or false because it's not like that kind of thing, but am I misunderstanding?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, Brandy can take that.
I can go sit somewhere else.
Good evening, board. Thank you, trustee Hunter. Brandy Hosack, chief of Human Capital. Currently, today, we do not have campus-based instructional coaches. There was a point in time that we did have that. There was a pivot away from that in the last couple of budget years, and there is an intent to pivot and reinstate those in the coming budget year.
And that's why I ask, because it's a budget question.
Yes, ma'am.
So that we know when we're thinking and considering it, that that doesn't already exist, that we need to be considering that because in order for this plan to be fulfilled, we need those bodies, we need those people.
That's right. We need instructional coaches in the classroom, supporting our teachers in real-time, all the time. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you. And then, again, we said that PLC, Gen Ed, and sped teachers are planning together. That's not what I'm hearing.
Yeah. I'd like to speak to that, and that's part of the piece. When that has been carved out and part of the design, that's what we saw in some of the successes. So, that informs for us structures that need to be in place and the right supports that need to be in place, whether it's in the design of the delivery model, the timing and the planning and the structuring of that, or staff or whatever it needs to be, so that that becomes more operationalized. So, that emerged from some of those outliers. I just want to qualify, Dr. Stetson was referring to our central, our central office, folks. So, thank you for that clarity. And to trustee Whitley Chu's question, that only gets so far in permeating the system. So, that's why you asked about, or it was, you know, what might be, or maybe it was trustee Lugo, what are some of those things that we would potentially need or see as critical for the future? At the same time, we are seeing that there needs to be a deeper understanding of meeting the needs of all learners, including deeper cultural proficiency and inclusiveness, centering equity around emerging bilingual students, centering equity around students with disabilities. And this isn't your question, but I really want to thank you, trustee Hunter, for bringing into this space. People will continue to, well, we're working to earn trust. We have to earn trust over time with our community, and people will begin to, transparency is one component, but as we earn trust, child by child, family by family, community by community, not probably at the speed, but that's when cyclical things will start to bring some clarity because we're coming to, in conversation of listening and understanding the real needs of our community. And so, I just really appreciate you elevating that because that's something, we have a lot more work to do.
This is my last piece. Master schedules are already set. It's February, about to be March, and about to be testing. We need some way for, so that maybe in our EOI, when we look at it, we can see that there was more growth, right? And maybe we'll even see that in our STAR data. As my granny Ray would say, in the meantime, what are we going to do, or not we as the district is what I'm saying, what are we going to do to make sure or to ensure that those sped teachers are getting in, that we have that communication, that those Gen Ed and sped teachers are being able to communicate some sort of way?
Yeah. I, working with the Office of School Leadership and with our leadership team and the principals to- Yeah. I, I will, working with the Office of School Leadership and with our leadership team, and the principals to, to really carve more and more of that time. And, and I will follow up, we'll follow up with Mr. Hicks and the team as well, about how we can, in the meantime, press forward with, with a more oper- operational plan for that to happen, or certainly to punctuate where things are working well, and to really address where that, that hasn't yet been come to fruition.
Trustee Kaufman?
Yes, thank you. So, yes, thank you very much for the report today and for all the work that you do on behalf of our students. I do have a couple of questions and comments. I want to echo first what trustee Hunter said around, well, it sort of echoes what she said. My comment is that this is a really important data regarding students' outcomes on tests like MAP and STAR, but I think if we were to ask our families what they want for their students, very few are going to say that their goal is for them to pass STAR. And especially for students with perhaps more profound disabilities, there are much more important goals for our families. And so, I know that our scorecard measure is test-based. I know that our accountability as a state is test-based, but our accountability to our parents goes way beyond that. I know personally that each of you, I know you, the three of you right there, I know very well personally, and I, I know the work of Dr. Stetson, and I've seen the work of Dr. Rocha Gill and Dr. Diaz, I know that you all care deeply and personally about the individual students and the human aspect of this. But I just want to ask that our board look at ways that we can address this progress in a way that is more student-centered and not number-centered, so that we can really focus on somehow conveying, again, to our families that we understand and care deeply about the goals they have for their students, not just the goals that the state of Texas has for our district. So that's more of a comment than anything. But I do want to say, I think that sometimes these meetings convey to our families that we're just dealing with numbers and rocks in jars, but that we understand, I understand that you all do care personally and deeply about the, the specific needs of our, our students. But I hope that we can find ways that that can be conveyed in these meetings. I want to also echo a little bit what trustee Gonzalez asked when he was asking about the special education professional development monitoring and the importance of, of knowing that data and tracking it. My personal experience working in the district is that that data on professional development is not readily available. That it's quite easy to find out who attended a particular session, or it's quite easy to find out which sessions this teacher attended, but to actually have a list to say, we have a thousand teachers who need this training in order to effectively serve our kids, we do not have any systems to keep track of which of those thousand teachers have already had it, and we certainly don't have systems to indicate which of those thousand teachers are implementing the strategies that were learned. And so, the system for that is creating a spreadsheet with every teacher's name, which changes consistently and constantly. So, I do encourage us to find systems and ways to track that data more thoroughly, because that black box between the strategy and the outcome is the implementation. And so, again, I do hope, as I continue my service on the board, that I will be advocating for us to refine the ways that we do these progress reports, so that they include implementation data in addition to the actual outcome data, so that we can really see, is the problem, not that the strategy was bad, but that it just hasn't been implemented. There's a big difference in our district with, you know, over 100 schools, and implementation is, needs systems to ensure that that works. I worked in a district today, supporting a district that's trying to implement a program at seven schools. At seven schools, the director themselves can go to each of those schools and have conversations with every teacher who's implementing. We can't do that, so we just need systems to ensure that that implementation is happening, and then reporting so that our board can do our due diligence of monitoring and supporting those efforts. I, in the spirit, again, of the individual needs of our students and personalizing some of this information, I do hope also that we can look at ways, perhaps it's around the quality of IEPs, having a measure for knowing what the quality of those IEPs are, and whether the IEPs are being met. Because I think when, when, when we as a district reach the point that our IEPs are truly collaboratively developed with families, then the goals of the IEP will reflect the shared goals of the, of the schools and the, the families. And so perhaps that would be an indicator that we could measure in the future for how well our, our, our schools are serving our students. And, okay, the scorecard includes targets for the percentage of students who receive special education services, meeting or exceeding their growth projection on the MAP in both reading and math. My question is, if we were to consistently meet those annual targets for the growth this year and each of the subsequent four years, would we meet our goal of 60% of students who receive special education services demonstrating achievement on state assessments on all grades, all subjects by 2026? So if that makes sense, it's that we have our growth target. If we were to meet that target every year, would we actually then achieve our 2026 achievement target?
Right. Your, your, your question is, is understood, trustee Kaufman. They, they are not aligned in that way. And so, right now, if we were to achieve that growth, even with, you could see this, all students, general education, K through eight, all, would we, in fact, meet or exceed that? That, it sort of begs that question, if you will. And so, there was a period of time that we discussed with the, the previous board, and I think there was an interest, we'll open that to you all, if you want to tease out more what you'd like to look at in terms of tracking towards that progress, not understanding where all students are and showing growth. I will say campuses, sometimes when there are some substantial areas to grow, right, you could, you could grow and not necessarily meet the, the meets target, if you will. When we make that progress personal, people tend to take more and more ownership towards that growth for students, because that's something they can understand. But it doesn't mean it has to be either or. Perhaps we need to look at both, and, or you all as a board, we'll take your guidance around how we might want to tease that out further. But it's, it's a very important question that you're asking, and they are measuring two different things at this point in time. Right now, we're tracking above our state, but our state's not doing so great either. And so, and, and I don't think anyone on this board, and certainly not feels comfortable about not striving for excellence for all of our kids, and certainly our students with disabilities as well. So I, I open that to, to you all to consider how you'd like to address that in the future.
Thank you. And then, and then finally, did I understand correctly that the progress data presented today only reflects the English testing that students did?
It, it does. It, it, there, there are, is an additional report that can be or will be provided if it hasn't been to the board around Spanish testers, because that's currently how the scorecard goal is crafted.
To include both?
I'm sorry?
To include both. I mean, to include one test measure for each student, but that, that for each student, it may be English or Spanish.
Correct. And then, but they're choosing.
Currently, this is only English.
It is. It's, and it's including the best of score of those two.
The final target does.
Correct.
These data today only reflect the English?
That, it does. That's correct.
Okay. So will we be receiving a follow-up then that includes both the Spanish data, but also the, the aggregate data that, that reflects the, the progress towards the actual goal? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the answer. And, and I know Dr. Villa Pondo and her team, we literally, we talked about this in the last couple of weeks as well, and was going to be working with the Office of Accountability to, to look at how can we better tease those pieces out? Because the kinds of questions that you're asking are exactly the kinds, as we were peeling apart. We also, you know, there's not a monolithic student receiving special education services. Like, we're looking at an emergent bilingual, and we're looking at across all student groups. And so, those are the kinds of pieces that when we put spaces and minds in, in a room together that come from multiple perspectives, it broadens all of our perspectives, and likewise, the kinds of changes we need to make in reporting those data.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees? Yes, trustee Boswell?
Yeah, I want to thank all of you for the information, the presentation, and my colleagues for their questions and, and comments and perspectives, really hearing a lot echoed here. So thank you all about the individual students, how we can better use data to look at those outliers. Shout out to Travis Heights that achieved a 62% growth, which is a major outlier and really shows what is possible. And, and I'm very excited that we're looking more deeply at what's happening there. So thank you for that. I think there's a lot of potential in that work, and, and I know that you have the tools to do that, so thank you for doing that. I have, and thank you for the discussion about the resources for instructional coaching for next year. I know that's something we've all been hearing loudly from our campus, and, and that there's very strong data that shows that that makes a difference. And, and our teachers know that, whether they, they know the study or not, they know that from their lived experience, and we're hearing that loud and clear. So thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. One, I would love, I don't think with the newly elected trustees, we've really talked about what MAP growth means, what that is measuring. And help me, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is based on a large national data set. 50% is the growth people would expect to see for each individual student, that each student has a different measure of the growth they would expect to see, and 50% is kind of what you would expect. So you're doing better than expected if you're above 50 and less well than, than you would be expected if you're below 50. Is that correct?
Dr. Diaz, Dr. Diaz, do you want to come up and answer that?
Yes, but I will also admit that Heather is the expert on MAP, and I have just recently taken on this responsibility. So I believe that to be true, but we can definitely get that information and ensure it's accurate unless Heather wants to speak to it.
Thank you.
But yes, I, okay.
I don't want to. Make something up.
Heather Petrazini, special assistant to the superintendent. Nice to see you all. So, can you ask your question again, because I was actually trying to take notes while you were saying it?
Yes. I just would love a clarification for everyone about what exactly MAP growth means, and what it means, you know, just what, what we're really measuring. I think it's helpful framing.
Right.
To have that understanding.
So I heard you talk about the national, so it's a norm reference test, right? We're looking at the entire United States with students who start at a place similar to you. So when you're looking at growth, let's say Dr. Lee scored a 100 at the beginning of the year, and I scored a 95 at the beginning of the year. Mathematically, they work out what would accelerated rate of growth be for me, and what would be a normal rate of growth for Dr. Lee, because she scored a little bit higher than me? At the middle of the year, then, we look at how Heather performed. Did she have that accelerated rate of growth? What did she have, a plus seven, compared to all the other students nationally that also started the year at the 95? And Dr. Lee's would be, did she grow by three points? Because that's what we would expect a student who started the year at 100, and this is what it looked like nationally. So that's what the growth looks like. The measure of academic performance is sort of saying, anytime you take MAP, we expect that you'll get 50% of the questions right. You are testing to get a 50%. And that's sort of looking at that zone of proximal development. Where is the student right now? What do they have under their control? What can they do well? And then what is just outside of their reach? So you're always scoring around a 50%, but then we see what your 50% is as your RIT score rises. So it gets more difficult as you go through the test, and then sort of ends when you hit that 50% mark. You've gotten 50%. And that's why one student may test for 30 minutes, another student may be getting 100% for a while until we can, they, the test itself, so sort of stops when they hit the 50%. Very mathematical.
That's helpful. I think that puts it into better context. So, so, and my understanding then is if we're looking at the 44, the 47% of students achieving growth, we're really doing less well than we would have expected based on the norm, which means we have more work to make up, more ground to.
So the less, the, the lower the number, the more there is to make up. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. I appreciate that. So I have a couple of questions beyond that. One is, the adjustments made in response to progress look very different from the last time we saw this. We saw this in April of 2022, and there was some stuff about people and professional development. It was also pretty heavy on product. We talked about Goalbook and Inclusive Schools Network and TeachTown Basics and Accommodation Central, and Imagine Language and Literacy, and Learning Ally, and a lot of products. And I understand, you know, we lean on a lot of things, but I really hear a lot today about processes and people and building capacity within our people. And I would just love to understand this shift in that goal progress, in the, in the responses to progress, and a little more deeply, kind of what shifts have been made, and, and how we can better support those shifts with resources and policies and, and things that will help support that work.
So thank you for that question, trustee Boswell. If, if, if I may respond respectfully, I was, I was not here for the April report. I think my first report was just in June, and it was related to, and that was post-hearing the findings of the Stetson evaluation. So I just, if we can kind of sort of lace these things together, we often talk about the big rocks that we need to address and sort of the five components in the Stetson report, and that really was a roadmap. And when I, with previous administration, it's certainly been reinforced exponentially by, by this administration of what's that roadmap about what the findings are? We took the time to engage in that type of examination, and then how are we progressing towards that end? So that was what, systemically, our folks were, were provided in that, that, that reporting, and then starting to project out and make some changes in terms of, of course, compliance and evaluations at lower rock that you've seen, that broader run around high-quality instruction, tier one, building the capacity of all of our leadership, our teachers. And that's not done. That's, that's a work in progress, because that is the teetering, those rocks are required for that inclusion rock to be in place for students successfully, and to build greater and greater access, capacity, and closer and closer to, to progressing towards grade-level standards. And so, then we looked at sort of those categories. So if you would dial it to the report that you received in June, and then in October, I hope you would find, I believe, and, and that you might, you might even feel like that sounds like, not that I'm going round and around, but that there's progress in sort of those frameworks being operationalized. And so, that's really where that came from. Those pieces were, certainly seemed to indicate things in, you know, purchases and things that were going, but the systemic work was certainly illuminated. And the report findings, I think they, in the belly, people knew those things all along, but it certainly was put in a very clear way, where we could unify and galvanize around trying to operationalize which currently is your vision, and is still an aspirational gap with how, where, where we are, our vision for being Austin's home for inclusive learning, with high expectations for all kids and high outcomes for every student. And so, that's not a soundbite. That is, that is a, that's a cry to us, an expectation. And so, that, that's what I account for in terms of that. Those are sort of nested pieces or product pieces, but, and we can certainly become more granular in the responses if that is desired by the board, with sort of unpacking what the systems things to, to earlier questions actually look like for our teachers and our staff members.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Rebenat. I mean, it clarifies for me that we are seeing these systems, the study from Dr. Stetson, the planning that's going in reflected in those approaches. So I really appreciate that it's a systematic, you know, strategic plan. So thank you for that. I appreciate very much.
And the first part of that was that leadership, right? A common unified vision. So it takes all of us.
And I would like to add again, so we are a relatively new team, so you, you know that. And so the things that you saw in that plan are different than the things that we, we're looking at, what the research says, and most of that is not going to be a computer-based program, but it's going to be about people. And so, you know, this is the plan that we have collectively created, that you're seeing come to fruition.
Great. I appreciate the work and the explanation. Thank you very much for that. Thank you greatly for that. A couple more things. One is, I would like to, you know, talk with, with each of you within our superintendent Segura, and with my colleagues about, and, and with Dr. Stetson's support as well, about policies and processes and resources. You know, what can we build into policy to really make sure this does become part of that air we breathe? Do we need a policy that every general education teacher in the district will be supported with professional development to better understand inclusion and special offerings and services in their classroom to special education students? Do we need a policy that requires joint Um, do we need a policy that requires joint planning? If we figured out that's one of the biggest triggers? Is that something kind of, what is appropriate for us to do as a board? And how can we ensure this is baked into the district's work? So this doesn't become something that is planned and done and really good work is done? And the nature of schools is that there's, you know, rotation in people. People come and people go, students come, students go, boards come, boards go, superintendents come and go. So what can we do in this moment when this good work is being done to really, really build that into our processes and policies? So, um, I hope going forward that we can do that work together, all of us. And I see Dr. Stetson nodding back there. Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. And I welcome any comments you have about that.
The attention to sustaining the change is so important. You could spend all the, I'm sorry.
Well, welcome her back. So she can be on the microphone as well.
Anyway, um, I really like what you're saying. Need surgeries in my future. So, okay.
It was that soccer game, Dr. Stetson.
Yeah, I should have played that. Darn it. I, I love what you're bringing up because, um, you're, you're, you're doing such good work. I, I, there's a real energy that I'm feeling, uh, in just the last few months. And, um, and I'm, I'm really excited about it. And I really do believe, and I've said this, that I think Austin ISD has an opportunity to really model for others coming from these, um, challenges to setting up these systems. And one of the things that our firm, I, I, I personally, uh, labored over is the whole notion of a CAV, uh, of sustainability. Once you get it in place, and that's so much, that's so difficult. And it takes time and effort. And we get our teachers excited and supported and so on. And then if we don't put those policies in place and, and formalize it, it drifts and a new leader or a different, whatever. Uh, and so there are actually some sustainability practices. Some of them should, I, my opinion, should warrant, and that would be, of course, to the, a district decision, the policy level that would inculcate that for the future. But there are some others that are, are, um, are very subtle, but just improve the quality of the processes that you have, which everybody's mentioning tonight, professional development. You know, um, where do you have, and it's exciting to look at your options. Um, we shouldn't be just stuck with this, with the sage on the stage. We've got to really utilize technology. Uh, you should require every consultant to allow videotaping of, of the critical segments of their training so that it can be shared with new teachers and onboarding them and so on. Well, I don't need to get the weeds here, but I, I love that, that, that there are, about five years ago, we all had a talk in our firm about what depressed us. And what depressed us was that a lot of hard work, everybody putting efforts and so on. And then you go back and they invite you to come back in seven years because they lost it or it didn't happen. So you say, what did we do wrong? Is what we ask. What could we have done differently, really? And, and so, um, I actually have a, a very simple little document. We identified five or six categories, what, in terms of leadership, um, uh, in terms of, like, for example, when you interview a new person, it should be a standard question, how does what you will bring to this school district support inclusive practices for diverse learners? And you, we need to ask everybody that even thinks about having a job here to, to, to go on the record, what is it that you bring to the, to the table? That is a huge message to people when they then come to work for your district, that that's expected in Austin Independent School District because that was part of the interview. So I have it. I even actually may have it in my briefcase, so I'll leave it. But I, I will, I, I love, and you will be able to add to it. You will, you will have great ideas that will enrich that document. It grows all the time. But I, uh, it's yours if you'd like to have it.
Good. Thank you for your guidance and support for all of us, Dr. Lee.
Well, I was just going to address all of you. Thank you very much. And you, but all of you have made excellent points about the MAP growth. Um, there's a lot of numbers to this. This felt, this feels very paperwork-y, right? I mean, there's such a human side to the work. It's the people work and the paperwork that make this, this, this work possible for students and families. Um, and I, but I do want to say that I think our team, um, is developing more strategies and capacity around using this data. And I'll give you an example. Um, I met with our speech language pathologists, which is a wonderful team, um, specifically around how to use this MAP growth data to improve their practice and partnership and collaboration with special, with general education teachers and special education teachers. So you may ask, what might an SLP and how might an SLP use this data? Well, the MAP growth is measuring language and literacy. And what are speech language pathologists supporting? Language and literacy, right? So they're using this data and information from the data. And you're not actually seeing student-level reports, which provides a really rich profile of not only where students are in different areas, like oral language, vocabulary, listening comprehension, reading, but then also where are students right now? Like, what, what should be working on them right now, specific skill areas? And then incorporating that information into their goal writing and interventions with students. So this information is really powerful, and you're just seeing one aspect of it. But this does provide a really rich profile of data that special education teachers can use, general education teachers can use, and even our related service providers as well.
Thank you. Um, and then I just have one more point of appreciation, really, um, for including the family pieces in the report, in the conversation, in the PowerPoint, in the discussion, that, um, Dr. Stetson mentioned the army of people who are here to support our students. And families are part of that army and, and welcoming, welcoming them, informing them, um, is so crucial, partnering with them. And I know, um, my own children haven't been involved with special education, but I know from friends who have. Um, it is a very difficult thing for families to navigate, and they need those guides, those partners. Um, and to find it within the district in partnership rather than having to go outside. I really appreciate the focus on that and that being included in the report. And I know we're going to talk about, um, family engagement later, but having that piece in, in each report we have, I think, is something I would love to see because that's an essential part of what we do and it needs to, you know, be part of that conversation. So thank you for that.
Any other trustees? Go for it.
Trustee Boswell, I'm going to prime the pump. Nobody needs to answer this, but I really want us to think about this, especially when it comes to special education. I know there's probably about five people that do what I do. My kid tells me, I got a 210, I got to make a 220. When that paper, when, when she takes the test and it's not 220, we sit down and we look at the actual map piece of paper with the chart that's got the little thing on it, and then all of the categories. I was like, whoa, geometry's kicking out behind. So what's, what's with geometry, right? Probably nobody else is doing that, honestly. I have the privilege of time, and I'm a teacher. I can do that. How can we leverage that with special education parents, with whatever? How, because these reports don't even, you have to request the report. It doesn't come home. I just call the math teacher, email the math teacher, I'm like, hey, can you send that to me? I did it last year at Lamar. I did it right now at Sattler Means. We need to leverage parents. How do we get them, you know, you know, the younger grades get it, and then it's like in the Wednesday folder or whatever? And it's like, oh, okay, whatever. Like, how do we leverage parents to help us?
So I'll answer that as a parent as well, who, son did not do well on MAP and also have the privilege of making sure, let's look at this together. What's happening with this? There is a report in there, and I do know that there are campuses that are sending the reports home to everyone. We've talked, did you get it? Did you get it? I think that's a practice that we need to develop on campuses, that the report does go home. But even in the fall conferences, the teacher's sitting with the parent and sharing that student-level report and the goal setting. So one of the beautiful things in MAP is that I can actually go in there and set a goal for a student and say, okay, Dr. Lee, you are a 100. Our goal for you by the middle of the year to accelerate your growth, perhaps in this case, not as before, in this case, she needs accelerated growth. We're going to focus in this area, and we're going to make sure you get a 110 or we want to get you to a 110. And here are some things we know you need to work on, but also making sure that that conversation is happening at the teacher-to-parent level as well as the teacher-to-student level so that we, there is a focus on what you're working on. And so that when, you know, I know last year when the report came home at our house and we were able to actually see the line go this way as opposed to the way it was going, I hope he's not watching. He's a great kid, but, um, you know, many of us are parents. So there was some work that needed to be done, but there was also this great relationship between the teacher and myself where she was saying, here's where we're seeing this, here's what he needs to do. And he also was very aware of, here's what's going on, here's the area that you need to focus on, and here's how I'm going to help you develop. But that really, that conversation can happen ongoing throughout the year every time that they get, that they take the test. There's also the skills. Um, there's sort of a progress monitoring piece that can also be turned on, which we've turned on completely, um, so that kids can go in more frequently and take MAP to sort of progress monitor along the way within MAP fluency.
To your point, um, in question as well, Trustee Hunter, that's good to hear here, right? And to know that here, but you're asking, um, also, how can we build it into the culture of the community, sharing with our parents, building capacity and understanding? And so we seek to do that in partnering with our school's office, uh, with our, with our parent support specialists, team members, creating facilitated sessions. There are certainly things that we can do in terms of, um, as well as our academics team and sort of demystifying that or explaining to parents, uh, you know, what, what this even means, um, for educators and non-educators. And then likewise, even we have additional capacity to build with our own, our own teachers and instructional staff over time so that they continue to feel confident and competent. When I looked at several of the, the celebrations, um, some of the outliers, where there is a culture of, um, progress and focus on progress and, and growth and kids, I mean, kids are doing the, a lot of that talking in that capacity. It's part of the conferencing. It's part of building that capacity, not only with students, but with parents. I mean, uh, the fact that your student can come, your, your child can come down and, and say, I need to be here. This is where I'm trying to track. Here's what, and then breaking it down. Um, and then having that profile of what are the next steps? That we have, that should not be mysterious right now. Um, there is, there's a lot of work, certainly with, um, our opportunities, I should say, with our, our families. Um, we've seen it in our power hours. Um, sometimes they're coming for the topic, but they're coming from the camaraderie of learning how to navigate and like, what should you even expect in a quality IEP? Um, and so those are other areas that have emerged as topics of interest. Um, MAP didn't necessarily emerge, but they don't know for it to emerge. Um, so we've got to like bathe that understanding as a learning culture if we're going to focus on that growth, um, and, and that profile for a learner, for folks to know where their kids are. Um, when you said if your, if your child isn't reading or struggling in that area, you need a path forward, um, not only for you, but what's happening instructionally and support, especially designed or otherwise for your child. And that's something as a system, we hope to lean in, in that partnership with our team and academics and the Office of School Leadership to strengthen for parents.
To the interim superintendent, what I'm really, um, like I said, I'm priming the pump for a future conversation is, in the middle school, that's where we're struggling. That's, that's not where it's happening, right? Though those reports are coming home. So as we, especially for our special education students, like Dr. Kaufman said, this goal is really long, but we keep missing it. So every time we miss it, we can't, how do we ever catch up to, to make that, that goal by, which is really far away? We should, you know, I want it here, and it's way out there. But, um, just to be looking at how to, I think someone said bake it in. Okay, never used it before, but bake it into what we're doing in middle schools with our special education students and all of our families. Thank you.
Trustee Hunter, um, you know, one of the things, and I won't take a lot of time on this, that we've done as a team is just map out the entire academic system. And what we find is, is inconsistency with how things are delivered across all of our campuses. And I think what we're seeing here, the dialogue between the team and the, and the board is, there are observations that it's occurring in some places, but not everywhere. And, and that is my observation, that's one of the things that's impacting the system in a variety of different areas. Uh, so no, I hear you, and, and I, I'm not surprised that that experience is what you're seeing. And that's part of the plan that we're developing.
Any other trustees?
Thank you. Um, so many thoughtful questions. I do have a couple of comments. Um, really, what I would, from gathering what I heard from, from my colleagues here, it seems like it would be helpful for us to have a follow-up to this, to this discussion in a couple of months, maybe when you're ready. But some key things that I would love to have us review in that meeting publicly is our work plan for special education so that the, um, so that the public is aware of the actual milestones that we've set out and ways for us to measure and communicate. For example, how many teachers have gotten trained? Or, you know, how many of our campuses have PSSs? You know, like just the different inputs that go into it. So number one would be the work plan. Number two would be, um, a report on the emergent bilingual students as well who are in special, who are receiving special education services and having that, um, included. Um, I know that you, I really appreciate you all talking about some of the campuses that it's working, some of the outlier celebrations. Um, but have some, like, I want to see a report, something of some sort. And I don't know if my colleagues also want to see, nothing like, not like a 30-page thing. I'm talking about like a one-page bulletin. Like, these are the things that we see that are in common with these outlier campuses. It would be helpful for me, so we and our board docs, we get, and the public has access to campus-level data. Can y'all like, like put a star or something next to the campuses that are Title I? It would really be helpful for me to get a sense. Because I, it, my, it seems like kids who are economically disadvantaged might be doing better at campuses that are not Title I campuses sometimes, but sometimes it's the flip. And so like, I don't know if there's a pattern there. I don't know what's going on, but hopefully you guys do. And hopefully, once we get some semblance of our DRE department up and running, we'll get that, we'll get more information there. Um, so that would be the third thing is what's working. And then the fourth is, like, I really appreciate, um, I do appreciate the, the table where you were showing, like, what you're doing. You know, the two columns, like what you're doing, what you're going to do. Um, and I think that it's really focused on what's happening with instruction, but we all know that what happens in a classroom happens within a larger system. So pardon this terrible metaphor, but if I'm, if I'm trying to bake a cake, and we know kids are much more precious and complex than a cake. But if I'm trying to bake a cake, um, and I have all the ingredients in a working oven, like, that's great. But what about, what, what if I don't? You know, like, I, like, we're not, we're not, like, what if my house is on fire? You know, I'm trying to bake, like, you can teach me how to bake a cake as much as you want and give me all the professional development. But if I don't have flour or butter, that cake is not going to happen. And so like, I want to make sure we're, like, you mentioned you want to see the family portion on our board, um, monitoring document. I want to see a whole section on staffing every time because I really think that is the, a big missing piece here, is we just don't have people. And maybe we're focusing, I know we're focusing on it in some ways, but I think we need to focus even more on maybe coming up with, like, do we need to change, not just through compensation? Do we need to offer more flexible, um, jobs, like more part-time jobs? Um, we have so many people who leave this profession when they become moms. The research shows that. Well, I was a mom. I am a mom. I work part-time. It's great. But if I didn't have that option, I wouldn't be working. So let's actually, like, I would really love to see some create, some, a little bit more, um, creativity about solving some of these staffing issues. And, um, the other thing that I want to kind of recommend is that we have a board retreat, yet another one. But I think, like, we, this board monitoring report is something that our board developed a little over a year ago. Um, but I think there are some tweaks because I keep hearing similar comments. And so maybe we need to just sit with this new board, get that together and be like, okay, this, this is kind of more what we're looking at. Um, so it helps you, so we're not spending a lot of time asking questions, is already out there in the report. So. But anyway, I'm very thankful. Thank you for talking about, like, the, the, the silos and kind of creating some more unity across our district. I know y'all are working very hard, and this is the top priority, I would say. Am I speaking correctly? I would say this is the top priority for our board. So we're here to support junior work. Thank you. It's still me. Yes, we do. Yes. Um, so thank you, trustees, and thank you, Mr. Segura. As part of our commitment to monitoring, the last question is to ask trustees to accept, um, the report presented as it aligns with our goals and constraints, and if not, to ask if this is still the right strategy for the district. So trustees, please raise your right hand if you're ready to accept tonight's report. Okay. All right. Looks like the majority is. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
May I just tell my, my vote?
Um, yeah, I'm still reading my script. So I was going to say, if you. So, I was going to say, if you are, if you are not ready to accept this report, would you like to briefly share your feedback?
Yeah, and I'm abstaining rather than saying no, just because I appreciate everything that was presented, and I think it was, it fit what the board has asked for. But I, I do think that we need to promptly revisit what we asked for.
Thank you.
To include implementation. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. So, Mr. Segura, do you have any final comments on this?
Just that I appreciate the board's support. You know, I think a lot of the things that y'all are looking to have addressed, I am, we are as well. You know, we're getting through it. It's going to take a comprehensive plan. The idea is to create a, an, a plan that actually improves the system so that it's codified in our culture, and it can't be eroded away. It's going to take some time, we'll continue to provide updates. I think everything that we heard is directly in alignment with what we're trying to accomplish as an organization, so I'm very pleased. Thank you for the support.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so we're not going to move to our information reports and updates. We're going to, I'd like to ask the board if we can take up item 6.4, which is our meeting with GR Recruiting. This is scheduled as a quick 10-minute update, just to introduce the full board and the public to the team. We are going to have an opportunity to meet with the board in a retreat in person and virtually on the 20th of this month, and that is going to be open to the public. So, you know, that's an opportunity for our public to be engaged. So, without hearing any concerns, I would like to invite our partners, GR Recruiting, to join us on Zoom. Hello there.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey there. Well, will Gary be joining us as well?
He is.
He should.
Okay. Oh, I didn't see you, there you go. All right, Mr. Ray, would you please introduce yourself and your team and share about GR Recruiting?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I can't see myself on the screen here, but I'll, I'll go ahead. Yes, I want to thank the board for allowing us tonight to introduce ourselves, our team tonight, and we certainly will respect your time by staying within the 10 minutes, so that was allowed to us to introduce ourselves. And I will start with a little bit about my background. I'm Gary Ray, president of the GR Recruiting. I've been in the search business for over 40 years. I know that sounds like a long time, but I picked up a lot of experience over those years. And we are very familiar with Austin, because we have done work previously in Austin, and we're excited about having an opportunity to help you find your next superintendent. We are a very diverse team with a wealth of experience, and we specialize in working with urban school districts across the country, as well as in state of Texas. We've done a lot of work with the Urban Council of Great City Schools, as well as capital districts around the country. We know that Austin is very different and unique in many, many ways than other districts in the state of Texas. We recognize that the community stakeholders are very much engaged in, in the district. And that's important, because stakeholders, working with stakeholders, that's one of the things we do best, being able to work with that. So, at this time, I'm going to introduce one of my colleagues, Gloria Davis, who will tell a little bit about herself and her role and her experiences.
Well, thank you, Gary, and thank you to all the Austin trustees for inviting us and having the confidence to help us, help you select your next superintendent. I am 46 years in education. I am an element, former elementary teacher, elementary principal, in the St. Louis University City School area in Missouri, and I'm currently in Chicago, but I also was assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction in the University City, Missouri area, before becoming a superintendent. I have been a superintendent in Kansas, in Dodge City, Kansas, as well as in Decatur, Illinois, and I am now in Chicago, Illinois, up on retirement, because I was asked to then become, after retiring from Decatur, to become the superintendent of Education for the Illinois Department of Juvenile Justice, to help them establish an educational system based on a federal consent decree. So, I have been with Gary Ray and GR Recruiting for over 20 years, doing searches across the country. I would say that as a stake, in helping with stakeholders, I have extensive experience in helping to districts to make that connection, to make that human connection, and to have all of the various individuals throughout your district feel that they have a stake in the search for the next superintendent. We know that we need to take care of making sure that all parties are heard, the underserved, those that you don't usually hear from, and so, we have expertise in that area, and basically going to them in the various parts of the community where they are. We have a strong background in equity. One of the things GR Recruiting is proud of is we have a whole equity program. We're one of the few search firms that have that. I was the leader on that, and I'm very proud of the work that we have done in that area in terms of establishing equity for all groups, board members, parents, staff, counselors, social workers, support staff, because all of the staff is important, and all of the staff need to feel that their ideas and thoughts are heard. So, we, again, are very pleased to be with you, and I'm going to now have Robert Alfaro to introduce himself. Robert?
Thank you, Gloria. Good evening, board trustees. My name is Robert Alfaro. I'm a, I'm a Texan, and I don't live too far from Austin. As a matter of fact, I live in a little town right outside called Hutto, right on the outskirts of, of Austin. And I've been a Texas resident, a Texas student. I've been in Texas as an educator for the last 31 years. I was a teacher of middle school and high school for 11 years. I was an elementary principal. I became a superintendent, then an associate superintendent, and the last 10 years, I spent in San Antonio, ISD, in, in the heart of the city. When I retired at 31 years, I decided that I, I was done. And so, somewhere along the line, through some network, I got an opportunity to work with Clark County School District, the fifth-largest school district in the country, as a region superintendent. Really enjoyed my years there as well, but I, I yearned to come back to Texas. And so, after seven years, I retired from there and came back to Texas and decided I was going to leave, I was going to live close to Austin. It, it just intrigues me a lot, and this is where I wanted to be. I have worked with Gary Ray now for, going on 12 years, and we've done searches all over the country, probably one of the best search firms, and I, I don't say it because I've been with him, I say it because other people tell us that. And we've done searches, intercity, urban, small, large. We did Austin, like Gary mentioned, Louisville, Plano, Fort Worth, Houston. So, we have that experience and that knowledge. I do want to say that we know a lot about your district. We do our research, but the most important part, I believe, is going to be the first few weeks that we spend with you in your district, talking to people and being intently, seriously listening to what the community is saying about your district, both the good, which will be a lot of, and what they're concerned about. Our job is going to be to help support you and guide you through this process. It is probably the most important job that you'll have as a trustee, and our job is to make sure that you, we can help you avoid those pitfalls and, and those, sometimes those issues that arise. And so, we're happy, we're ready, I am, I know I am, I'm excited. So, I'll turn it over to Gary. You're muted, Gary. We still can't hear you.
I'm having a little trouble.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, well, I'm having a little trouble here, but anyway, we'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, trustees? Yes, Trustee Kaufman?
I have one quick question. We have some disagreement in our community about what the, the value of an open search, but our board has heard, this, this board has heard loudly and clearly from a lot of people that they would like an open search, and that was one of the criteria that, and that we had asked for on the proposal. I would just like to ask your opinion, so we can share with our public around the, the pros and cons of an open search versus a secret search.
Well, I think on the 20th, we were planning on addressing some of those, you know, some of those pros and cons, you know, of the search. Obviously, we've done a lot of different types of searches. If you have a closed search, obviously, the, I think there'll be more candidates that will apply in a closed search, just because if the superintendent might have a job right now and doing well, they might find it difficult to expose themselves out there. We've done a partial open searches, and that's worked very well for us. We did that in, just recently in Fairfax County, Virginia, one of the largest districts. We've done it in Kansas City and a number of other places. And, and there's, there's lots of ways to do the stakeholders' involvement in the search process. We're certainly on, on the 20th, 20th, we were going to give you a number of options, but it's really your search, not ours. I think the, the more open the search is, is going to have fewer candidates to apply. You can just imagine if you were a superintendent or even assistant superintendent, in some cases, you may not want the people you're working for to know that you're looking. And so, that will have some impact. If anybody says that that's really not true, they're not telling you the truth, because it does have an impact on your candidate pool. Doesn't mean you can't get good candidates. I'm not saying that at all, but it certainly will have an impact on your pool, who might, who might apply, whether they're in Texas or some other place. In an assistant superintendent, the, the, that's a natural movement to go to the superintendent, but we've had some difficulties in my 40 years around the country, even in that regard. Public education is pretty much under attack across the country, so the, the, the good superintendents, the outstanding superintendents often are not willing to move, and, and many boards are, are reluctant to let them, let them go.
Thank you very much.
That's a challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trust, any other questions for trustees? Oh, yeah. Sorry, Ms. Gloria, were you going to say something?
Oh, I was just going to say, as, just to add to what Gary said, I was the lead on the Fairfax County, Virginia search, which was a partial open search, and as Gary mentioned, it, it worked out well, but it, it took a lot of navigating in terms of working with the community groups and such. So, it, it is something that candidates will ask about and be very concerned about, especially sitting superintendents.
Thank you. Well, I look forward to talking more about that on the 20th. Any other questions? So, just for the public, you'll recall, we do have a website for the superintendent search, where you will find more information about GR Recruiting, and we will update it as we go through this process. So, thank you all very much for joining us, really appreciate. I did want to mention, you do have staff that speak Spanish correctly, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Wanted to make sure that got out there. Thank you, that's very important for our community. Appreciate your time, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to visiting with you on the 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks. All right. So, that, like I said, that meeting, the retreat with GR Recruiting will be on February 20th. It'll be at 6:00 PM right here. So, the next item is related to family engagement and communication strategy, and I wanted to see if there was somebody who was going to speak on that. Welcome back, Ally Gillett. We are very excited to see you back here. You weren't gone long.
Okay. Good evening, trustees, President Singh and Superintendent Segura. I'm honored to be serving in this role of interim chief of communications and community engagement. It's not something I ever imagined I would be doing, if you can believe it or not, but I could not pass up this extraordinary opportunity to support our district in this interim capacity, to bring family and community engagement to the level that I think all of us believe that it belongs. So, I want to start by sharing what I believe is the purpose of family and community engagement. It really comes down to two key things. One, we know that students whose families are involved in their education achieve stronger academic outcomes, and we believe that family involvement has everything to do with the culture and of, of the school ecosystem, and not the traits of our parents or families. When there is not a rich culture of engagement, it's because there are not adequate systems and cultures in place that welcomes and supports family involvement. In other words, it's not a problem, I'm sorry, in other words, it's a problem of the system and not the people. So, the other big why behind engagement is better decision-making. Equity by Design teaches us that we make better decisions when we collaborate directly with the people who are affected by them, and I think that our 2022 bond is an example of some really great decision-making that was done in collaboration with our communities. So, if we get it right, everyone feels a greater sense of belonging and connection to the district and their schools. I like to think of it as making our schools and districts magnetic to families and staff, and that supports other goals like student performance, enrollment, attendance, and teacher retention. So, one of the ways that we think about engagement, you have our campus-level engagement, which is the focus of our Family Engagement Support Office, which Katie supports, and you have the district level, which has been the focus of the Community Engagement Team housed in the Department of Communications and Community Engagement. So, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Katie Cass-Stevens, our interim executive director of student enrollment and attendance, to start us off by providing an overview of our Family Engagement Support Office.
Thank you, Ally. Good evening, trustees, interim superintendent Segura. Thank you very much for having us this evening to talk about this important topic. I have the honor of serving as an interim executive director of student enrollment and attendance and supervising Marisol Frey, who is here with us today, who coordinates the Family Engagement Support Office, along with her team. One of the key ways that we implement family engagement at the campus level is through, through 73 parent support specialists that work at, at various campuses throughout the district to support basic needs and barriers to learning, and they also work intentionally to develop deep relationships with families to empower them to become active participants in their child's education. So, PSSs, Parent Support Specialists, PSSs utilize a variety of strategies to support families. Each PSS works intentionally to have a space that they call a family welcome center at their campuses. They, they often meet with families to do a family needs assessment, and, and oftentimes, those family needs assessment results in utilizing the Family Support Hub, which is a, which is a system, which is a referral, referral system that we've worked on in collaboration with United Way. Parent support specialists work strategically to find partners to support their campus community and families, depending on needs that are identified for, for those campus communities, some partners that, that they, that they Some partners that they might work with are Operation School Bell, Coats for Kids, Central Texas Food Bank. And they also host a variety of learning opportunities at their campuses, such as opportunities for parents to learn more about how to navigate parent-teacher conferences, as well as food and nutrition programs. And finally, Parent Support Specialists play an integral role in helping families navigate our parent portal and our online registration systems, which they do through registration workshops throughout the spring semester and as well as throughout the summer, to ensure that families are set up for success for the following school year. So the Family Engagement Support Office works directly with Parent Support Specialists to ensure that they are set up for success in their roles. One of the ways that they do that is, as PSSs are hired by their campuses, the Family Engagement Support Office provides orientation and training to help provide them with the various tools and strategies and ensure that they're ready to go as they get started in their work. One of the key things they get oriented on is the PSS Action Plan, which is actually a plan that lays out monthly goals and key activities, as well as resources and trainings to support those goals and activities. And so it's actually set up with three key goals and activities per month, so that PSSs can really focus on those kind of core goals each month that will switch as they move forward in the year. So for example, in February, one of the goals right now is for PSSs to focus on kind of early student registration, since we're helping get, ensuring that our families are ready to go for the next school year. Parent Support Specialists leads, also do campus visits weekly to build relationships and offer guidance and support. So they're out and about at campuses throughout the week. And the team hosts monthly professional development sessions to build capacity and alignment of the program. They also offer what they call PSS learning sessions, which are drop-in opportunities for additional training. Some of those learning stations have been about documentation etiquette, for example, Google Drive training and connections to community resources. And finally, the Family Engagement Support Office hosts Tools for Success virtual workshops that are actually for families, for any family across the district to connect virtually. This month is covering our early learning program. In December, covered attendance, actually. And one other piece I wanted to highlight is the team has been giving out monthly awards to parent support specialists who go above and beyond with some of these activities. So for example, in September, some PSSs got awards who are having a wonderfully set-up family welcome center, and in December, the award was dedicated to PSSs that were doing a stellar job with updating their notes in ECST, in our electronic child study team database. Hand it back over to Ally.
Thank you, Katie. So now I'll walk y'all through an overview of our district-level engagements. Katie kind of talked about a lot of what's going on at the campus level. So we design engagement opportunities that are relational, culturally proficient, or we aim to design engagement opportunities that are relational, culturally proficient, inclusive of the diverse students, families, community members, staffs, staff and partner organizations that make up our Austin ISD community. And we also work to ensure that we provide a variety of opportunities that make it as easy as possible for folks to engage in a way that is most convenient to them. I'd like to remind my team that we exist to support our campuses, and we know that we have work to do to better align with our PSSs who are working at that campus level, so that we're providing an aligned and cohesive structure of support, but I'm going to talk a little more about that at the end. So just to highlight our digital engagement, that includes our website, Let's Talk Platform, family, staff, and community newsletters, social media, our newer Spanish-only WhatsApp communities, and then surveys and input technologies like Thought Exchange. Our district-wide engagement includes our events, our in-person district-wide engagement includes our events like African-American Heritage Celebration, Early Learning Day, Juneteenth, and Pride Parades, Hispanic Heritage Month and Showcase, et cetera. It also includes, like I mentioned earlier, initiative-based engagement like the 2022 Bond, long-range planning, budget planning, repurposing, things like that. And then, of course, we have our ASD Up Close Leadership Program, where we empower folks with an inside look at the district's infrastructure, programs, and services to create a community of well-informed education advocates. So the good news is, we have great people doing great engagement work. We have an abundance of programs, initiatives, and resources, and I've only discussed the things that live in Katie's and my department. So engagement is becoming part of our DNA. When I consider where we are now and where we were when I started five years ago, we are in a very different place when it comes to how we, as leaders at the highest level, see ourselves in relation to the community. So if I go back to the purpose of engagement, to create systems and cultures that welcome and support family and community involvement, to make our schools and districts magnetic to families and staff, the challenge, as I see it, is to better leverage and align the resources that we have to support our campuses and leaders in doing that work. And as y'all gathered, Mr. Segura is pretty good at systems work, so I feel pretty confident about where we can take this. And I want to take a point of privilege, I don't think I actually get those, but I have the floor right now, so I want to say that I've never met a leader that understood and valued the work of community engagement more than the man that y'all have chosen to lead us in this interim period. I didn't get to be here on the night that y'all had the Love Fest announcing him, so I just had to take that moment to say, I'm with y'all. So lastly, I would feel it would be irresponsible of me to come in here despite my history with the district and pretend that I fully understand all of the pieces. My approach to solving any problem is going to be rooted in what I've learned from Equity by Design. We have to ensure that we fully understand the problems from the perspective and lived experience of the people who are experiencing them before we try to slap a solution onto it. So while I certainly have a vision for how we can better align and leverage our resources, I'm going to require time to pull together what do we already know and don't know about what's working and not, from the folks who are doing the work and the folks that we serve. So how I'd like to frame the conversation tonight is getting your input on what success looks like. If you can help us shape the vision of where we want to be, we can help develop a plan with appropriate and achievable milestones in the near and long-term future. So with that, I think Katie and I welcome your ideas, observations, and my favorite word, wonderings. So thank you.
So thank you and welcome. Trustees, are there any questions? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Again, welcome back, thank you, so happy to see you. I remember our long conversations about community engagement and what it should really look like, and now we get to see that, so I'm excited about that. Plus delta, I'll start with the concern that I have. I spoke with a local school district that's similar to ours, and just because they have a family community engagement, and I've shared that with the interim already, and I'm sure he's like got it all in his mind. But the one thing I did notice, that when I was sitting with them, and the director, the executive director of the department was talking to me and telling me all the things they have, I was like, oh, we have that, that's up close. And then she would say, and we also said, oh, that's my sort of encasas. And everything she was telling me that was located here, we have here. So we have all those pieces, but we don't have them here. And so that's one thing that I really, I know that I hope that we're moving toward. The next thing is, I saw something on Twitter one time, and it just kind of, it threw me, and I'm gonna tell you why it threw me. It was like, family engagement, and it was showing parents how to buy a house, which is, that's great, right? That's a good thing, but is that the right thing for us to be doing? City of Austin is doing that, Travis County is doing that, those are great programs. First of all, it's also disadvantageous as to teach people how to buy houses, just FYI, because they can't afford to buy them in Austin, they're gonna buy them in Hutto and Maynor. Guess where their kids are gonna go to school? Hutto and Maynor. Not that we don't want to teach people, you know, to do those sorts of things, but I'm not sure that that's our mandate, right, as AISD? Like, the building the houses, maybe that's our mandate, to create more affordable houses and that sort of thing. So as we're looking at the kind of curriculum that we're teaching our parents, y'all, there are parents that run companies that cannot read STAR reports, right? I'm not even joking with you. Every year, if you just go look on Facebook, it's me going, I'm making videos, right, as an advocate, I'm out there making videos telling people how to read a STAR report, or telling people, your kids can practice STAR doing this, right? That's what they need, right? If you guys choose, that should be your curriculum. I'm just saying, there are people out there, trustee Singh is asking for report cards, because we know two clicks and they're done. That's all we have to get a parent is two clicks. And if they cannot access the portal and all those, and these are schools that don't have PSSs, right? I'm talking about Lamar, and I'm talking about Macau, I'm talking about schools that do not have PSSs. So they're just, you know, so when we see them, they're hopping mad, they're engaged then, they're like uber-engaged. Like, we don't even want them to be that engaged, right? And it's something we could have avoided. The last thing is, I really want to point you guys toward the Pramatoras. I don't know if you know who they are, but that's what we need in every single school and every vertical team. The parents like me and other, these parents, they mostly are, no, they're all Latinas. And usually when I'm there, I'm the only English speaker, so I get to practice all of my Spanish when I volunteer with them. But they were basically parents, and they're like, you know what? Y'all are in the school, you trying to make sure things, we just gonna pay you to do what you're already doing. It's our PSSs liked because they're parents. And so something like that, where we're having, you know, inviting parents in, and like, maybe you can come in and work half-day, I know, maybe one time, like, one of our parents was like halftime PSS, right, or whatever she was doing. But those are the kind of things I really want us to look at, because we got, I got four years, she got two years, or whatever, we've run for 12 years, doesn't matter, we're gonna come and go, our families are going to stay, and our rep, Dr. Robinette said it, we are building back trust, one child at a time. I'm gonna share a personal story that I'm gonna be through. My mother was an Anderson Yellow Jacket. I went to school in Austin ISD, many of them, until sophomore year, where my mom just gave up on Austin ISD. It was a lot of gang activity way back then in the 80s, and she said, I'm not gonna do it anymore. And I graduated from Westwood High School, okay? When it came time for me to come back to Austin and work, she was like, oh, so you're gonna go to Round Rocks, look everywhere, I'm going AISD. And I'm gonna go back into our neighborhood, where our ancestral home is St. John's. And she just couldn't, she's like, you've done your time. And when I went to work, she goes, you've done your time. And when I went to fish, you have really done your time. But I kept on working, because there are quality teachers all over, but it's building those families, right? And I was a teacher that, I don't care, I go knock on your mama's door, right? Not everybody does that, or even wants to do that, but since we can't ask more of our teachers, we just cannot. So where do we build in that knocking on the door? Katie and I have had that conversation, I say, there's 453 doors, I want you to knock on all of them, right? And so that's the kind of thing, as we're building this, we get an opportunity to kind of shape this thing, those are the kind of things that I'm looking for, and as a board member, whatever I can do to support you, to stand behind you, that's what I want to do. Thank you.
Trustee Lugo.
Well, I just want to give folks a chance, like, any thoughts or insights or comments? It was a lot to take in, I'm here with you.
They know me.
I know, but part of this is also to, like, convey to the public.
One thing that I thought of, I mean, several things I thought of when you were talking, but one thing I think maybe might be helpful is just thinking about, you shared an anecdote, I'll share an anecdote. When I first started at AISD, we did a staff retreat, and our department is the Department of Communications and Community Engagement. And I have seen a lot of efforts, I've been in there, right, trying like to, like, why do those things, why are they separate, right? And it's kind of hard to combine them sometimes, because there are things the communicators are doing that, when things are happening on campuses, there's an emergency, like, all staff is like pulled, like, they gotta get that messaging to families, right? But when it's not a crisis, how are we using our communication resources to support the engagement efforts? But the story that I'll tell is when I, we were at this staff retreat, we were talking about, we did some activity, we put like stickies on the board, Katie and I were actually just talking about this. And we, somehow it kind of came up of whether or not, did we feel a connection or understand how our work directly impacted student outcomes? And it was a real mixed bag in the room. There were some people who really felt like, not really, like, I love working for a school district, it's like delightful, right? But not necessarily feeling like they knew how their work impacted student outcomes. And so to me, the connection between engagement and student outcomes is quite clear. And I think probably to a lot of engagers, it's quite clear, and that's why we're so passionate about it. But I think part of the kind of culture that I want to help foster in the department is making sure that everyone in the department, even if you're the one that's writing the emergency letter, right, when you're not doing that, that you have a clear connection of how you're supporting, kind of, like I said, creating that magnetic culture, either at central or at campuses, to pull, that keeps families in our schools, and then gives us all those other great outcomes that we know happen when families are showing up at our schools.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll add to that, as you're talking about ensuring that we're kind of providing our families learning opportunities that are relevant, I think, to student outcomes and to the experience that we want families to have within our campuses and understanding how to support their students best. I definitely, I'm thinking of our Tools for Success workshop series that we do have in place, and how we can ensure that every one of those sessions is, first of all, available to meet our broad range of families, so that we make those available virtually, we also make some available in person, because we have a wide range of learners, and everyone has different, kind of, different degrees of how they engage in that experience, but that we're also utilizing that to, utilizing those opportunities to ensure that it ties back to the student learning experience as well. So I definitely thank you for that feedback, and we'll make sure that the curriculum is reflective of that.
Thank you. So I do have actual comments. Try to make it quick. So, help me understand, where does the parent power hour reside? Is that a completely different department? Is that sped? I know, that's why I'm asking.
I can help you make the point that...
So FYI, sometimes I ask questions and I already know the answer.
Do you know, it's gonna come up?
Go ahead.
Thanks for the question, trustee Lugo, so hello again. Parent power hours, we're a part of our commitments to begin to start to connect with our parents, again, this year through the special education team and department, and so we do those both in person and virtually, and are continuing those, and that was one that, one of those that's upcoming is one that Dr. Lee mentioned. We likewise have gone with our PSSs, as I've mentioned, oh gosh, I guess not for all the trustees, because we've had some new elections and building capacity also with our PSSs, and sort of just even understanding more and more about our department, so that they can be strong conduits for our families as well. But that's currently where it's landing.
And then, how do the three areas work together to make sure, you know, information is getting out, and for folks who can't attend, maybe they want to see a recording? I went online and I saw that there are PowerPoints posted on the website, but not for all of the meetings, so just any kind of background or insights on that?
When we have the ability, at least for our sessions, that we are able to, we're trying to do more of that, posting and connecting, just like we're needing to create alignment for our entire system, for teachers and for students, there's definitely an opportunity to grow in partnering and making sure that's widely understood. When we, admittedly, when we shared with our SEAC, our Special Education Advisory Council, how things were going, as well as additional community partner sessions, that are, one example that you're familiar with is like connected with Vela as well. When we shared that information, there were some notable gaps in the communication. We do send out blast to any families through email and otherwise, and to our principals to share in their newsletters about upcoming events. But the feedback that we got is it was sometimes inconsistent in getting to the actual families, and so that's an area for growth.
Can I step in real quick?
Yep, absolutely.
Trustee Lugo, I think I might be able to help you make the point that you're making. So when I started thinking about where, the question, where does community engagement live in AISD, right? I'm just gonna read you this, it's a lot, but we've already heard about from me and Katie, right? We also have, our SEL department has the Families as Partners programs and our Student Equity Council. Operations has our Long Range Plan and Bond. The Equity Office with the Equity Assessment. Board Services, Intergovernmental Relations is managing our superintendent search, they do AIC advisory bodies, climate surveys, human capital, we have staff engagement. The Budget Department is leading the budget efforts right now, because our engagement team... Um, the Budget Department is leading the budget efforts right now because, um, our engagement team, um, has experienced some changes, right? Um, and then, uh, School Leadership has been doing engagement around the, uh, special areas redesign and teacher planning time, right? So, um, I can tell you from my experience when I was in the Engagement Office, I would learn about all of these various things. And I can tell you, you know, there'd be like this opportunity where I'd be like, oh, if I had known that was happening, we would have put it in the newsletter, we would have done this, we would have, right? And so we know we have work to do to connect all these pieces. And I'm not saying all these things need to live in the same place. I think it's like really beautiful that we're really in a place where everyone's really understanding, like, if we're gonna do good work, we need to be talking to the people that we're doing that work for, right? And feel, and getting feedback from them and giving them the information they need to meaningfully engage. Um, but we're not yet there and how, and I think that our department really does, can serve as that hub for making sure if you're doing all these great things, how are we making sure that people all know about them? Um, and that we're helping amplify and get more people into your events and things like that.
Yeah, and I love that you're, or at least what I'm picking up on, and if this is not the message you meant, um, uh, please clarify. But kind of what I'm hearing is the opposite of what I've seen in some organizations where it becomes territorial, right? Like, it's like, all communications must go through the, right? And it's, but that sometimes loses, um, the spirit of what's happening, right? So like the budget folks know what needs to be, or at least one would hope, right? Like, the budget folks know what needs to be conveyed or how they're going to convey it and, and how to get there. And they may do some, you know, consulting with you guys, like, hey, what do y'all think? Or, you know, there might be some collaboration opportunities, but it doesn't have to be territorialism. It can really look, look at, because y'all are, it's a small and mighty group. But, um, you know, really looking at how to continue to have folks manage and own their pieces. But really, how do you also work together and, and connect those pieces? Um, so thank you, um, Ally. And then, um, a couple of other, um, questions. Uh, yeah, and not for an answer necessarily tonight, but I, I really would look forward to, um, having the board and the public get a better understanding of, you know, what is that strategic outlook, um, for the next two to three years? And I know we're in a transition period, but sometimes even just like an outline. Um, um, and having that also based on the equity by design. And, you know, how are we asking, um, the different advisory bodies and CACs and all, you know? We have so many different ways to, um, reach people who are already engaged and get that information. You know, how do we consolidate some of the emails? Or do you want 20 emails? And I have three kids at three different campuses and God help me, I'm skimming emails. I'm, I'm sorry, teachers at all three schools. So, um, so yeah, I would love to kind of see, uh, where, where the district would like to go with that. And then, um, oh, one really big kudos, and I don't know who to give the kudos to, so hopefully this will spread the love to whoever needs to receive it. But I have heard so much positive stuff about a couple of things. First, the superintendent, like, it's almost like, where's Carmen San Diego? So I'm totally down for that as a child of the eighties. Um, so yeah, the, the updates from you, interim superintendent Segura, that, I've heard so many positives about that. Second, the, um, the way that information was communicated about the ICE days. It, so my co-parent even brought it up. He was like, what's going on with AISD? They're kidding. Like, it was the proactive, it was the clear, it was like, this is why we're not gonna have school on Friday, right? Like, really helping people understand. Because for those of us who work at home, we have a different kind of privilege, right? Versus somebody who's like, I gotta clock in at Denny's, I don't know where to put my baby. Like, this child was supposed to go to school sometime this week. Um, and so having that background information is really, really, I think, it, like I said, I've heard really positive things, not just from him, but from other families. So, thank you to whoever that needs to go to.
I think I'd like to just, um, take a moment to acknowledge, um, Annie Dribicki because she has been leading our community, um, Communications and Community Engagement Department um, in the absence of an interim chief. So when I came on board, it was actually February 1st, it was in the middle, so I cannot take credit. Um, I did, you know, attempt to provide some extra bandwidth, but I think all the credit really goes to her leadership. Um, and then of course to Matias and kind of setting the tone around communications.
Any other comments? Trustee Boswell?
Some comments. Um, I want to thank you both very much for the presentation, for the chance to talk about this and for the invitation to share um, some thoughts about what the vision, you know, what we hear from the community and, and what, um, we envision. So thank you for that. Um, I had the good fortune to get to know both of you through family engagement in really deep ways. Um, and we have spent, I have no idea how many hours together out in the community. Um, and I've seen you in action. I know kind of who you are and where you come from with this, and I'm grateful that you're leading this work. Um, I can say without question that you are both deeply relational rather than transactional when you approach this work. And, um, from what I know of this work, when it's transactional, you're looking at what the district gets out of it. When it's relational, we're looking at what our students get out of it. Um, and we've talked about how family engagement plays into, you know, what we talk about every single time we look at our scorecard. It plays into, um, academic achievement, into attendance, into enrollment, into discipline, um, into social emotional health, into, you know, why families choose our schools, that magnet, that magnet that you talked about. So I really appreciate, um, where you're coming from with this. And I think, um, as I tell my kids, when you do good things, good things happen. And when you do this work well, um, great things will follow for our students and our whole community. So thank you for that. Um, I really, uh, want to lean into what experts know about this. We have Dr. Karen Map with the Dual Capacity Framework that, um, talks about every family, every family member being expert in their child, being an expert in things, um, that add value to our educational system. Pairing that with the expertise of our educators who bring a different kind of expertise. Um, National PTA has their national standards for family-school partnerships, which are built on very much the same concepts. Um, and, and when you're brave enough to do it well, you see it work. Um, we have a policy called GK Local that is built on those same ideas. Um, I think it is largely an invisible policy. And I think one of the things I would like to see is for us to ask ourselves and our community, um, whether we're leaning into that policy and how well we're doing that. Um, I will read a little bit from that policy. It's a couple of pages. Um, one, it is imperative that parents, families and the Austin community be engaged in the process that will promote a healthy system of public education and assist in educating all children to meet high academic education, uh, expectations and standards. The contributions made by parents, families and community members to children's education are invaluable. For this reason, all administrators, teachers and other staff shall work to achieve the engagement and involvement of parents, families and community members as partners in the schools. So this is a work with people, not for people. And I really appreciate the chance to talk about that. Um, I know that our parent support specialists do this all day, every single day. Um, I know that Families as Partners is built on this. Our parent support specialists are humans with army knives with giant hearts. They know a lot, they do a lot. Um, they are some of the most amazing people I've ever had the chance to meet in this district when I've seen them in action. Um, I also know that resources being what resources are, we have to deploy them where they're needed most. And that there are a lot of campuses with great need that never have the benefit of that. And I think it's, it's one of many tools and we need to talk about how we're supporting families at other places. And I'll use, um, just as one example. Um, almost 23% of students at Austin High come from families with economic disadvantage. That's 540-plus students, um, who have similar needs but don't have that same level, level of support. It comes in other ways. Um, but the need is great and, um, I'm really grateful that the city helps us with that partnership. I think that really needs to continue and I think we need to be sure that we're, we're making resources available everywhere. And I think part of that goes back to this policy, um, all administrators, administrators, teachers and other staff. And, and that comes back to our questions about what resources people need. Do people need training? Do people need time? Um, when we talk about teacher planning, teacher planning is important for a lot of things. One thing teachers, um, sometimes need and want to spend their time on is calling parents. Um, my kid is 24, my older kid. Um, I still remember a call from a teacher in first grade about a month into the year. She took five minutes to call me when she could have been doing something else. She had kids of her own, lots of things to do. And she said, I just want to tell you a story about something that happened today. Um, and she had seen my child, be kind to another child. She, the fact that she called me and told me that specific story told me that she saw my child for who he was, that she knew the things I worried about as a mom, and that she saw him do something that would make me feel great. Um, and I remember that story 18 years later. And how are we giving our teachers, the people who are closest to our children in the classroom, time, training and support to do that work as well? How are we honoring that work as valued and valid? And just as valued and valid as the test scores and the other things we're talking about. Um, so when we talk about what engagement looks like, that's part of what it looks like to me. Um, I have a very long list of questions that I'm not gonna go into. Um, one question I have is, I know the work of parent engagement has been moved under technology. Um, I will share very clearly that my first impression of that is that is seeing family engagement as transactional rather than relational. Um, and I would love a clear understanding of why we believe that change is in the best service of our students. And I, that doesn't necessarily need to be an answer that we have today. But that is something, as we look at budgeting, as we look for what we're doing ahead, that I will look a deeper understanding of. Um, because, because right now I don't have clarity on that. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, what was that policy again?
GK Local.
Okay. I would love it if, um, trustees could get a copy of that policy. Um, thank you. Trustees, are there any other, a trustee Sepata?
So, um, I think, and I, I spoke at a class today of parents and I just think that parent supports specialists have a, a golden heart because you go above and beyond. And just like everybody, the principals and, but a parent support specialist is so important to the campus. But everything you mentioned, that was the role of the parent support. From campus to campus is, it's, they're not able to do that because of the shortage of staff. So they're doing a lot of other things that are not even mentioned in the job description. And that is keeping and hurting our students from growing because the investment of their time is being taken away to doing other things. And if we don't re, if we don't put that time back for our PSSs to really meet and, and work with parents, uh, we're doing triple work. Because when we don't invest time with parents, we're just not helping them to know that there's untapped talent there that could help us do a lot of things on campus. As a former parent support specialist, I remember when the principal asked me if I wanted this job and I said, I would only take this job if I only work with parents, period. And so give me the list of all the students, of parents that you want me to call. And there was, I got a list of 300 and I called them all. And they were like, what? You want to meet with me? Why? My child got in trouble? No, I'm new, I, I'm new in this area. I don't even, I'm visually impaired, I don't know this area. I want, I want you to, to meet you and tell me, uh, what your hopes and dreams are about your kids. And just having that simple conversation. And I had 75 parents that I did individual meetings that came. And they all had common themes of what they wanted, their hopes and dreams for their children. And they decided collectively in small groups, we rounded different themes of what that would look like. So parents can really make a big, big contribution when you just give them that space to do it. Um, and we don't have to do a whole lot of any handouts and everything because, you know, this is where they're building that relationship with each other and helping create ideas that they would, from their own education experience, they missed, like I missed, um, that I wanted to make sure happened for my kids. And, uh, when it was a, a no PTA, it was a standing room PTA meetings, you know? So, um, I think that's where I would, my, my vision is to be able to give the parents that space to grow and learn so that work becomes sustainable at the campus. They have ownership as a collective unit of parents and community. Because it was grandparents that, you know, you, you have a lot of P, adults that fall under parent role today that really want to do something with the schools and they don't know what that is because we're not asking them. So there was a parent, for example, that was always making copies. And I was like, why do you make copies every day? I was like, you know, you've been here for, how long? You said five years? Well, because teachers need copies. Yeah, but what would you, what would you want to do? Why are you here? Well, I love to read and I want to make sure my daughter reads well. Well, how is that happening if you're making copies? And she says, well, I wish I could read into some, you know, in a class. You think they would let me? I said, why not ask? And she started reading to the students in her daughter's class that were having challenges in reading. So, so there's, uh, until you have, take the time and, and really meet the parent where they are and see what their hopes and dreams are and what, you know, that's the untapped talent that we are missing. Um, and so, and I think because of, of the pandemic, it's, parents are not coming in crowds like they used to, but the ones that are coming, you know? Uh, it's really an opportunity to really get to know their story and seeing how they imagine what that school, how they want to help the school be successful. So anything that we're doing as a parent support, how is that, that tied into, um, student growth? Because we tend to do a lot for our parents without expecting them to do anything that's gonna help their student with attendance or behavior or academics. So, because there's just, um, we, we can give, give, give and give and, and then our, our, the growth is not happening. So how do we begin really being strategic and how, and how we're helping our parents? That's gonna tie into what their, their student growth. So that's my vision and, um, I, I am more than happy to, I mean, that's what I love to do. And, and I think, um, it's a great opportunity for our parent supports to really begin having that kind of a relationship. And, and not be so, um, using this program, that program. Because through the conversations, you will learn what it is they need and then you identify, they identify those programs themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Potz. And just really quickly, you did touch on, um, you know, I'm thinking, trying to think of like root causes. And one of the causes maybe that we're not seeing everything we want to see on all of our campuses. And we talked about this earlier, right? Is that you might have a campus where a PSS is being pulled to do a lot of other things and that might be why they're not. So, well, why are they being pulled, right? And so I think we need to be able to answer that question and figure out what are those things that they are spending their time on? Is it lunchroom monitors? We know that's a big one. Um, if I recall correctly, I think there was a $500,000 budget item when, five, five years ago. So I don't know where it's at now, but, um, I know we hear that a lot. But it's those like understanding what is pulling them away? What are those activities? And are we making sure that we are fully supporting our campuses and getting those other things done? So our PSSs can do what, what they're meant to be doing.
Thank you. Um, I think we have time for one more question, if that's okay? So unless, I mean, well, I should probably ask, are you all ready to? I'm just looking at the time here and I, I know we have a big exec session, so really, this is, this is your meeting. So I can, are you guys okay if we do one more question? Who, who all wants to ask questions? I see trustee Gonzalez is giving me the eye. Okay, so the two of you, and then we'll, and then we will kind of, if you do have additional questions, I know that, um, Ally and Katie are always available to answer them. So let's start with trustee Gonzalez. So let's start with trustee Gonzalez.
I, sorry. Thinking about what trustee Lugo said earlier, is there a way, do we know all the different methods of communication that different campuses are using? I'm thinking myself, just as someone who's trying to stay connected to the campuses, the 15 that are in District 6, like all of them have different ways of, some of them have a Facebook, some of them have a Twitter, some of them send out stuff through the PTA through emails. So I'm just interested to know if there is a way that we know what all those different methods of communication are, and then what can we do to unify them? And I'm just going to go on to the next question, so you don't have to answer. I saw the slide about in-person engagement opportunities, and something that interim superintendent Segura said about kind of having academics be the through line through everything. As a former ethnic studies teacher, I see the list of activities that you've got on that community engagement slide, and I just want to think about how to make attendance at those events more universal. Some of the other trustees and myself were able to go to the MLK Day Parade, and we ran into one other campus that had brought a ton of their families and had buses. And how do we increase access to all those things? Additionally, I also had a constituent read out about the Great Promise for Native Americans and how our district recognizes Native American heritage during that period of the year. And I'd like to see more, or an augmentation of efforts in that particular time, because I didn't really see, you know, as much as I would have hoped to. Do we have a way to gather feedback regularly from PSSs regarding what the needs are on the campuses and what insights that they have regarding to what, what needs to happen? And then additionally, is there a way to connect, like, the needs that a campus or community might have to resources in our city outside of like the Austin Ed Fund that might have a really narrow period for applying to funds? Or it's a tax on my time if I'm a teacher at an under-resourced school and I have to fill out this really long grant application, and I'm already struggling in a lot of other ways. And is there a way that those needs, like, you know what I mean? Close that loop of like, what's the need on the campus? How can we better get resources that are definitely out there? And that's it. So that would be fast.
I could try to like rapid fire respond very briefly. So you said, do we know all the communications tools? I believe there were, a couple of years ago, we did do an assessment of where all our schools were at. We had 60-something using LivingTree at that point. I think it was based on a grant. But you've identified a huge pain point that we are well, well, well aware of, which is that we have, there's, remind, there's LivingTree, there's, there's dozens. And then if you have kids at multiple schools, you have to figure out all of them. We totally understand that's a problem, it's been a problem. I think what we underestimate is kind of the heavy, heavy lift of training all the folks to get where we want them to be. One exciting thing is that we are transitioning to Salesforce, and Salesforce offers a communication, family communication cloud service that will do many of, and almost all of the things that a lot of those different various apps are doing. So the idea would be to eventually migrate to that. Unfortunately, based on prioritization of all the different things that Salesforce will be doing, we're in year one, the plan to roll out that piece, which would be to get rid of School Messenger as well as pull out all those other different, like, tools that the campuses are using, that is a plan for year three. So it is, it is a ways out before we get there. And we can, I would love conversations about maybe how do we make the time between now and then a little less painful than it is for families? But that's kind of the situation. Increasing access to the events. I know that for some of the events, you know, we often offer hubs of buses, but we don't do it for all of them. So we can kind of talk about what's the decision-making process around when we're going to provide that. And then, do we gather feedback from the PSSs? I know that in the engagement team, you know, anytime we're engaging on something, we often will kind of call together focus groups of our PSSs. But it's obviously optional because it's something that pulls them away from campus. But I know that they also have their monthly professional development meetings, and they do, they kind of have a feedback loop there, as well as there's a weekly newsletter that I know Mari Sol puts out to the PSSs. And that kind of ties into your question about connecting the needs of the campus. So how are PSSs getting the resources that they, I've identified, my families have these needs. It's either through that professional development is where we provide them with that, or if it's things that are smaller, like those grants, that would be the kind of thing that we would put in the newsletter to the PSSs so that they could have those resources.
That's so great. I love it. All right. Trustee Kaufman.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. And thank you, welcome back, Allie. I do want to give a shout out to the Refugee Family Support Services Office for their role in family engagement. They represent several different languages that enables them to support our families as well as maintaining a contract with an outside provider who can do a lot more languages. So I'm just recognizing that we have more than just English and Spanish in our district, and appreciate that our district has made active, actively supporting those languages a priority. I do want to echo what trustee Boswell said about the questioning about the family engagement office being in the technology office. And, you know, when I think of the technology office serving the role of facilitating the online enrollment process, that to me is a transactional thing. The enrollment process is not serving families, right? The enrollment process is serving the district. Families have a right to enroll in our schools, and they should be able to walk into the schools and sit down and be engaged in learning. But the state and the district set requirements for the information we need them to complete before they can sit in those seats. And so, just want to recognize that that is not family engagement. That is paperwork. That is bureaucracy. And that's, could speak to part of what trustee Zapata said about the time that our family support specialists are engaged in things that are not directly addressing the actual needs of our families. So just something to think about. And when I see it located in the technology office, that's what it appears. Now, I don't know if that's how it ends up functioning, but that's what it looks like. I want to just acknowledge the history of the parent support specialists in Austin and echo what trustee Zapata said about the importance of that role, but just also, just to make sure that we maintain that history lesson of what that position has looked like in the past and how it's functioned. And to, you know, and when I first came to Austin, we were engaged in the Alliance Schools, which was a partnership with the Austin Interfaith. And that the role of the parent support specialist was really of a, of a, of a, an organizer to really get into communities, conduct one-on-one conversations, to hold house meetings in people's homes. And that was a powerful model. Our dual capacity framework is also a powerful model. But like, as trustee Boswell had said, these things can just kind of come and go if we don't really, not only institutionalize things in policy, but also to remember our history. So I just hope that we keep records of those things and that we let that inform how we continue doing that work. I will say that I'm grateful that we have a Department of Communications and Community Engagement. A lot of times, companies, government organizations, businesses, like, they have a different purpose, right? They're not necessarily trying to communicate with, they're trying to communicate to. They're not necessarily trying to engage, they're trying to, you know, influence. And so I'm grateful that our department specifically is around communications and community engagement, and that we don't have a Ministry of Propaganda, Personal Promotion, and Politics. And I just want to, you know, and you asked about priorities, that we make sure that we're asking questions in order to understand and not to generate data to support what we have already decided to do. That we actively and persistently pursue engagement rather than just inviting it, but knowing that when we invite it, we will hear from the same families again and again. But we have to actively pursue it and reach out and go where people are and communicate in ways that work for them. I want us to continue as a district moving towards timely transparency, that we are a public institution funded by and accountable to the public. So always asking what information do we need to push out? Because we, people need to hear this right away. What information do we legally and ethically have to keep secret? And everything else, how do we make that available so that when people look for it, they can find it? When people ask for it, we can give it to them promptly without having to wait for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks for an open records request to be fulfilled? I do have a couple of questions, actually. How much do we, these are quick questions, so don't worry. How much do we spend on the Axios contract annually?
I feel like I'm going to be making up a number.
Don't make up a number.
Okay.
I don't want to misspeak. I'll get the information to the board. And when is that contract subject to renewal?
We'll get back to you on that, too.
Okay. I just would like to know, kind of when we approach that, what is our process for evaluating the need for that contract at this time? I want to just, these are some very specific questions. Will you, Allie and, I mean, Ms. Diller-Duchy and Ms. Segura, will you seek and sustain partnerships with community organizations to engage with families?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes. And would you maintain those partnerships even if the community engagement that they facilitate results in some criticism of the district? For example, when we have a partner who asks for engagement, and then the feedback they receive is, we don't like ASD because of this, we don't like ASD, or we're concerned about this. If that feedback that they help facilitate results in criticism, will we still maintain those partnerships, knowing that we need to hear that?
I think you can expect nothing less than you've seen from me in the past, and so the answer is yes.
Thank you. And then, would you ever like leverage contacts that you have personally or professionally to promote the image of one individual employee in the media or to solicit public comments at board meetings?
I would not do that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you, trustee Kaufman. Anyone else? Great. Okay, so I'm just going to take a second to say, welcome back. So glad to see you at this role. And I was really happy to hear you mentioned equity by design. So I have to acknowledge our chief equity officer, Dr. Holly. Thank you for that work, and I'm just so excited about your new position. I think we all are excited about this well-deserved and long overdue promotion because that equity by design was fundamental. It was unique. It is something historic for our district. And in this role, I can see how it's going to transform how we do our work, not only in passing bonds, but also in all of our communications and the work that we do for academics, and our students will really benefit. So thank you to, to you two ladies and also to Dr. Holly, because I know, I know and I hope that to see a lot of collaboration. So thank you so much. All right. Our next item is enrollment updates.
All right. Our next item is an update on our current state of enrollment and sharing our Enroll Austin changes. And for that, we'll have chief technology officer, Oscar Rodriguez, and his team.
Good evening, President Singh, interim superintendent Segura, Board of Trustees. Good evening, my name is Oscar Rodriguez, chief technology officer. And I'm here joined tonight with our interim executive director of enrollment, Ms. Katie Kat Stevens, to provide you all tonight some updates on enrollment, some of the work that is currently going on with the work in that area, as well as improvements that we're making with some of our systems. So tonight, we'll cover sort of four main things. The current state of enrollment, so high-level data of ongoing trends that are affecting enrollment sort of here in the state. We'll then move on to improvements that have been made to our current enrollment systems. So with enrollment moving under IT at the start of the last school year, there were definitely some lessons learned, some areas of growth. And so we put together a rapid improvement plan to make some improvements, address some low-hanging items, to make the next cycle much better for our parents. We'll then move on to our Enroll Austin, so that's our longer-term sort of system modernization that we'll make with our enrollment system to unify all of the systems that we currently have. And then lastly, we'll close out with the engagement and feedback component to make sure that as we're building things, as we're changing things, that it's in partnership with our stakeholders. So current state of enrollment, I'm going to share some, some high-level data around the state and around our, around Austin. So high level, as you can see, enrollment has increased in the state. However, for urban districts, there is, there are declines. Here you can see that overall, you know, the state enrollment has grown, and you can see that through Austin being the dotted blue line, you know, that's, that's where we're at. But if you can see the overall urban districts, you can see those general systemic trends. I think, especially as you look towards the end of the graph, and you see at those inflection points, you can see the effect of the pandemic definitely on enrollment through all of the school, all of the cities listed there. So what are some of the things that are influencing some of those, you know, economic trends, generational trends, demographic shifts? So overall, births are down. So there's these societal shifts, these demographic shifts that are affecting us as, as an organization. Housing prices. So we've talked about the economics of living in our, in our great city, and so housing prices have nearly tripled in that, that time range. Our city is experiencing significant growth. However, that growth is not in the age groups of the families that we serve. So while growth is in the city, we see it, you know, in our buildings, traffic, the growth is majority over, over the age of 18. And then lastly, the declines that we're seeing are resulting in growth in some of our suburban districts. So that's where the, some of the changes are occurring. So these are some of the high-level trends that are affecting sort of what, what we saw overall. So who's being affected by those trends? Where, what communities are being impacted as a result of those things? So if you see in this slide, if we look at the student demographics, these changes are affecting different communities differently. You can see that overall Hispanic and Black students are declining, and Asian and white student enrollment is going up. And so, when you think of those factors that we just saw, some of those things have a disproportionate impact on some of our communities. So what changes are those things resulting? So where are those students, where are those families leaving to? So here in this analysis, for the 21-22 school year, you can saw that we lost about 13,000 students or so in that, in that, that time period. When we did an analysis of the levers by reason code, we came with this breakdown that was sort of the what happened with those students? Where did they go? And if you see the breakdown there, you can see that, you know, 32% enrolled in another Texas public school. Some of them returned to their country of origin. But if you look particularly at the numbers around charters, privates, and homeschool, that is actually our target for our market share. So that becomes our opportunity to recapture some of those students in that area. Now, if you look at the main reason, the other not known, 42%, compliance only asks us to track students in secondary, so seventh grade on. So we don't have to track what happens with our elementary students. And so, one of the things that we're looking at piloting is implementing a process or some kind of exit interview to get some more data, get more context on what is a deeper root cause as to why families are choosing to leave the district. Our belief is that if we get more of that data and more of that context, that will help inform our strategy of the things that are within our locus of control to make better so that families are not leaving the district. And so that takes us to, you know, how our families are experiencing our enrollment systems. We currently have four different technology platforms. Each of those could have eight possible different notification letters. Each of those letters can have different instructions. And then if you compound that by each student in that family, you get to see this exponential complexity. I think the theme tonight has been, we're definitely moving from an area of siloed, bifurcated systems to a unified experience. The reality is to our families and our students, it's not that department, this division, it's Austin ISD. So how do we look at the processes and systems and simplify that experience? How do we eliminate altogether any kind of barrier for a family to choose our district as a way to, you know, facilitate the process of them receiving a great public education within, within our district? So those are the high level, that's the macro level. We're going to move into now the next piece of the practical tactical improvements that we've made for this upcoming enrollment cycle. And I'm going to hand it over to Katie to talk about those improvements.
Thank you, Oscar. Good evening again, trustees. Katie Kat Stevens, interim executive director of student attendance in a helmet. I want to stay on the... Good evening, trustees. Thank you again. Katie Kat Stevens, interim executive director of student enrollment and attendance. I want to stay on the slide that we were on just for a moment because trustee Lugo in the earlier... in the earlier presentation when he mentioned multiple emails from teachers coming at you all the time. I thought about this slide because this slide is really talking about that kind of compounded experience when you have multiple things coming at you for for the variety, for the totality of the students that you have in your household. So I definitely thought of this. So we're 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 working on that. So I'm going to go in to start talking about some of the improvements that we are excited to launch beginning in the fall, but that we've already started planning for now. So I'm sorry, some improvements that we're launching now that will inform next year's student enrollment systems. So what we've done is we've started aligning dates for all application based programs through our common applications so that those dates are consistent for for when families are learning about which programs they might have gotten into. We have reduced the numbers of forms in our online registration system from what was previously 17 to 10, so to make that a little bit easier of a process. Out of district families are now able to complete online registration, whereas previously they they weren't able to do that. So we've been able to make that easier on out of district families. We've made significant improvements to the pre-K screener process, which families will be experiencing in in coming soon. And we've also increased our support for campus office staff. We offer weekly office hour sessions for campus office staff to learn about kind of right just in time topics that are pertinent for office staff. And then we also offer month monthly informational sessions where multiple district leaders come together and and provide some conversations. For example, right now it's big on enrollment and enrollment systems, transfers, pre-K enrollment, et cetera. So we're providing that those kind of cross departmental learning opportunities for campus office staff. We have also consistently for the past three semesters held semesterly orientations or semesterly professional development for new and returning office staff to ensure they're they're up to speed with their professional development. Other ways, other things we're working on currently in the fall, we hosted a district wide showcase, which was the first time where we brought all campuses in the district together on one day to showcase the variety of programs that they have to offer at their schools. That was held at the Palmer Events Center in October. We are also working on printing, on creating printed enrollment guides that each campus will have that really highlights the the spectrum of programs and offerings they have available to the. And those will be offered both in a web based version as well as in a printed version. And we're we're also creating school specific videos for each of our campuses. There are about 90 second videos that that talk about some of the highlights, go into to the campuses and talk about some of the highlights that the schools have. That and those will be available for all campuses to use on their on their pages, but as well as to distribute in ways that might be helpful for the campuses. And now moving towards our what what we're looking for in terms of systems change for the long run. So Ally mentioned in the previous presentation about Salesforce, she mentioned some changes that might come year three. So year one, what we're currently working on is developing a vision and design for what we're calling enroll Austin. And this is a unified enrollment system. So it's our move towards a place where enrollment will feel will be more accessible, intelligible and equitable in one streamlined platform and it will be operated by Salesforce. These types of systems changes, moving towards a unified enrollment system have been common in several large districts across the country. So if you would like, you can learn more about some of the details from New York, New Orleans, Chicago and Denver in the appendix of your slide deck to learn more about what that's looked like in those cities. And kind of the biggest thing to to think about with this system is it's one portal, one process, one timeline and one outcomes for families and for for the schools that they're that they're choosing to attend in our district. So I want to go in a little bit into the to the kind of stages of the design process. While this new platform isn't going to launch until the fall and that meaning it will launch in the fall and it will be for the 2425 enrollment cycle. The design for this platform has already begun. In in last semester, in October through December, we launched a district, a steering committee made of cross functional, a cross functional team of AISD administrators who met weekly for about three months to discuss the goals and vision for the new enrollment system. And we also held some subsequent print meetings with principals to talk a little bit about their experiences with our current enrollment systems. The focus so far has been what do we have? What's working well and what are some of the pain points from from within our the people internally who are utilizing those systems? And then we'll shift more later, which I'm going to get to later. But we have a a series of engagement opportunities that we'll be hosting later on, which which will come. As we enter into the development phase, Salesforce is poised to begin the work of what they call discovery. So where they'll be digging deep into our current processes and kind of aligning that with with the the platform that they have that they can customize to to our needs as a district. And then in the fall of 2023, we will launch our new platform. And it's going to include what's what's really unique. It's going to include a school finder application where families will be able to kind of type in their address, see what their their zone school is, but also see what other opportunities might exist for them, other other options, other school school choices for them. And that's all going to be in one platform. I mentioned briefly about the steering committee that we have held so far. So we were reviewing our current systems and also forming recommendations for policy and process changes that might need to be implemented in advance of the new platform. So thinking about what what are some policies that we might want to bring to the board to consider? We convened weekly for three months and the group was made of a variety of central office leaders, which you can see a list of that came from a vast, from a a large variety of departments across the district. And I just want to point out that the recommend the the recommendations that have risen from that steering committee have, we know that the recommendations are going to be iterative and responsive to ongoing feedback from stakeholders, which which I will comment on our comprehensive engagement plan at the end of the presentation. An important, one of my favorite parts about this experience so far, I must say, is when in one of our first sessions with the steering committee, we we developed our our vision as a steering committee by asking the question of how do we want families to feel after they go through our enrollment and registration processes with the district? And I'll just call out those key pieces. We want families to feel like they're valued members of the community, that enrollment, that it's a single system that's accessible for everyone, that it's efficient, it's logical and easy to navigate, that families know they were treated fairly and that they feel they were well served by the district. I just, I really, I really love this vision. I hope you agree. So talking a little bit about the flow of what of of our unified enrollment system. So first, we want families to to really get a good understanding of what choices, of what it means to have choice when choosing schools and what choices are available. Awareness of the various options that they have and in walking them through how to evaluate those options that they have in front of them. The next step would be actually applying to schools. And we and when we say the word apply, it's it's kind of making the selection of the choice of the available options to them that they would that they would desire to go to. And then matching through the system with those preferred options. So the system would kind of walk the family through that process. It's important to think about, we we have the ability to incorporate transportation information into the system. So we know that that can be, that's a really a valuable add on to to ensure that that as families are making choices, they know when they would and would not have access to transportation options. And then finally, the last phase would be they would actually register and enroll through that through that same system. So I want to, I mentioned briefly about some some policy, some of our, the recommendations that have come out of the steering committee and how some of those might have policy implications. So just wanted to review some of the the key recommendations that we've heard so far. I'll just mention a few. So one of them being that enrollment would be centralized for all families and across all schools via the enrollment enroll Austin platform. And what I mean by that is that all schools would be on one central application platform with clear and transparent eligibility and admission requirements. It would be a standard application with standard registration timelines. And all families seeking to enroll, to transfer, to re-enroll or to complete just kind of an annual online forms process would be using the the same enroll Austin platform. And they would be doing that for their zone school or for other schools, choice schools, magnet programs, all in the same place. We additionally, we would look, we've, the initial recommendations are to modify some of the transfer processes to align with our district needs and to utilize the platform for processing those transfers. We want to, it's important to continue the practice of accommodating families if space allows. But we also, there was, there's been a conversation about recognizing the need to set a cutoff date in September for for these types of transfers and create clear parameters for midyear transfers. And for example, for hardship, in in also clear parameters for certain hardship transfers that might occur outside of those, outside of semester changes such as due to childcare safety or change of address. And then finally, we want to enact school assignment priorities to promote equity while also accounting for current policies that we do have in place. So we we've talked about implementing a priority structure for the annual assignment process that includes siblings, children of staff, majority to minority, which is a, which is a transfer process that's already in our board policy. And finally, in and out of district transfers and that there would be a prioritization process for those various types of of transfers. So thinking about engagement, some engagement that I wanted to highlight first that we've already done is we've been able to complete seven focus groups across all seven trustee districts, representing a total of 46 campuses. Some of the questions that we asked in those focus groups are what what makes a good school? We heard teacher quality, we heard cleanliness, behavior, curriculum. We also asked what what children like most about school? And our our, the the families said things like friends, play, extracurriculars, athletics, their teachers. How, we asked about how families research about their school options. We actually heard spreadsheets quite a bit. We heard school visits, word of mouth, online rankings and resources. And and we asked families how they make their decisions about where they're going to go. Again, we did hear school rankings, program opportunities after school programming, proximity to home or to workplace, as well as diversity and inclusion and class size. And there are some quotes on there that are that are fun to read through if you have time later on. We we recognize that throughout this process, there are a variety of touch points and engagement opportunities that need to happen. We've gotten several of those started through, and and we're thinking about it in kind of four different categories. So how are we engaging with board and policy, with our central office staff, with standing committees that exist within the district and within the, and then also how are we engaging with the wider community? We, aside from the family focus groups I I discussed, as we, we wanted to first introduce to the board our initial recommendations. And then we're going to go and and look for feedback from the community as well. So we're we're excited, we're going to be setting dates for those sessions soon. And then we're also going to be bringing back, we're we're going to be, we're looking to take some of the initial policy considerations to the board to get initial feedback before coming back with kind of final, final recommendations to consider. Just want to say thank you. I I've been a part of this, I kind of in closing, I just want to say I've been a part of the district for about six years. My my background is in the community schools model. So our conversation about family engagement is is very, is very much a part of what brought me to the district to begin with. And I I want to say that this project feels like one of the most transformational projects I've I've seen so far in my tenure within the district. It's not only going to support families at the beginning of their journey, when they're first joining AISD, but throughout some of the critical junctures when they're choosing to go from pre-K to to kinder or from middle to high school. And in also, enrollment is a shared experience that every single family goes through. So by by investing in this process, we're kind of, that's going to have a compounding impact on fam, on the way that families experience our district. So I just want to say thank you and welcome any questions and feedback that you have.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions? Yes, trustee Hunter.
Good evening again. I I don't know where that quote came from, but I'm going to have it printed up. It's not this department or that department, it's Austin ISD. 100 facts, just that's how that goes. I have two mess, two concerns around messaging. The first is about enrollment. I've heard from two different people now in this month, they were turned away from schools. And I'm I'm aghast, I'm like, we can't turn people away. I don't think that it, the message of like, when someone comes to enroll, you know, I don't know what the law is or what the rule is, but surely there must be like, okay, you forgot it? That's okay, we'll get it tomorrow. Johnny going to class B, because we got to get him, because we don't want them going down the street. Because I promise you that charter school is going to be like, you forgot it? Bring it tomorrow, right? I don't know what the laws or what the rules are, but our our messaging to our campuses, those front desk workers, if they forgot their light bill, it's all right, we'll we'll work it out later, right? So I don't know how we get that to everybody, but and with one month, like their house wasn't even on the map yet. So I get that. Austin is growing so fast, like I couldn't even find their house. So but just that messaging of we don't turn people away. Even if you got to say, have a seat, I don't know, but let me call downtown or not downtown, but wherever we are, Southfield. My next question is, my messaging is about around enrollment. And there was a firestorm that I don't know if you understand it. When you have enrollment and you ask for teacher recommendations, parents do not understand. That is not a teacher's job, right? If they so choose, they may recommend your child, right? Just so happens that my teacher got COVID and she had not done it. And it was the 13th and I was like, ask your social studies teacher right now. And so she did it on the 13th and I just was like, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know she hadn't talked to you about it and you had to go in and fill that form out, I really appreciate it. But the messaging to our parents is that, oh, teachers know it's coming. Well, if I have 140 kids and they all want to go to law school, they all want to go to Lamar, that's a lot of clicking. And it was just sometime like, you need to ask your math teacher because you don't want me filling it out. I'm just being honest. So there's that kind of thing, I really want us to work on our messaging around that. Last piece, why do we have applications for schools that aren't like, let me pull it up on my screen, I'm sorry. Okay, if I'm not mistaken, and y'all correct me, right? Anybody who wants to go to Better Check, I mean, not Better Check, what is it, what was I looking at? Uh, Garcia, right? Garcia and Sattler Means are special programs because they are single gender, right? Not just anybody can go there, it's about the the gender at birth, assigned birth. Okay, so then I'm looking at things like Northeast Early College High School. Anybody can go to Northeast Early College High School. If they take the TSI, they are then admitted into that actual program. Why are people filling out applications for that? Right? And I don't know if it's just like they go in and they just do the common application, which is super simple. It's not like you just pull down a couple of things, right? But I don't know if there's a second piece like there are for bigger programs. Like if you go to Lamar, then there's like a, the thing you got to put together or a dance or a song or an instrument you have to play. But in our new system that we're building out, programs don't, I mean, it feels like we're kind of trying to make it exclusive and I hope that's not the goal because plain folk, right? The system is if you want to go to LBJ, you can go. When you get there, if you're interested in fire, when you fill out your your. When you get there, if you're interested in fire, when you fill out your, your choice sheet, you tell them you want to be a firefighter. If you're interested in being a nurse, you tell them you want to be a nurse. Right? But this is crazy. This is also contributing to our problems of why it's almost too much choice, right? It's almost too much choice and I'm all about choice because, and I'm, my kids go through them, right? And so I just want us to strategically abandon. It's my new favorite word. Doesn't even apply here. But I want us to look at this list and take it away because we may be overwhelming a good group of our parents. Some, and I heard one parent just say, can't we just go to a regular school? Does my kid have to decide in fourth grade what they want to be when they grow up? And for some kids, they've always known and that's fine. But for some, it's just like, this is a regular school and if your kid want to do some of our programs, that's fine. So as we get the new Megatron or whatever it's called, when we get those pieces, I really think like, we have to figure out a more simpler way to say, if your interests are, pull down, that's cool, right? Culinary, I mean, what is it Travis or one of them? Yeah, hospitality P-Tech. Anybody can go to Travis. If you're interested in hotel or you're interested in that kind of culinary thing, you can, you can do that. But let's not confuse people before we get them in the, let's get them in the door. That's like the most important part, right? Get them in the door. Thank you.
So I'd like to be able to respond to, definitely, we want to work with our office of school leadership to make sure that those administrative barriers don't prevent kids getting, you know, what they need from, from us in terms of an education. As far as the information system, as Katie mentioned, it comes with a school finder. This is going to overlap significantly with a lot of the feedback from the long range planning about asset mapping. Can I type in my address, select interests and start to tease out those things, those considerations, those trade offs that I need to consider versus programming, distance, transportation, not transportation and do it in a simplistic way. I think to your point about the recommendations in, in some of those workflows, we don't want to, we wouldn't want our parents to have to pull information out of us. We want to push it. Right? So it's the, the analogy we've been sort of through this project, the Domino's Pizza tracker, the Uber Eats, the Amazon cart. It's, here's your status, here's your deliverable, here's what's pending. Hey, this is where your, your, your application is in the process and communicate that and give that feedback proactively as opposed to wondering where, where my, my, my application is, wondering, did every, did I complete everything? And so that'll be part of the architecture of the system to push out that information to our families to make sure that they know where things are moving along in the process.
I appreciate that because I know where my refund is. It has been accepted.
I, I also wanted to add a little bit of info about the, the school finder. It's, it's pretty cool that you kind of have two different entry points. One is I'm typing in my address and I'm looking for the school that's closest to me. And then I might look at some of the programming that's available and if any of that programming has any eligibility requirements to get into that specific program. But then the other entry point is, I'm interested in STEM. I want to see what middle schools offer, some sort of like specific type of STEM programming that I might consider. Or I'm interested in a fine arts academy. I want to see where those opportunities exist. And that you, you go in through more of a programmatic lens, looking for certain things that interest you. So there's kind of those two pieces to help, to, to help funnel through some of that, that noise.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Oh my goodness, it just left me. I'm so sorry. It's gonna come back. Okay, I got it. Sorry. I apologize. Thank you. The school finder, does it include information about the hours outside of school that that campus offers childcare? And also information about the cost of that additional childcare beyond the school day? Because I think that's something that parents are really interested to know and it's different, you know, depending where you're at is, what is the cost? And then how many hours can I depend on this campus to provide care for my child that I don't have to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, definitely. So we've actually just very excitedly started our discovery phase with the school finder, finder application. That discovery phase will go through a series of conversations with first with some of the individuals in various district departments. But then we're going to go towards families to make sure we're catching all of those pieces. What do we want to see in that school finder tool? That did come up at our first discovery session, so I appreciate you bringing that up. But, but yes, I agree with you. That's very important information to be able to provide accurately.
And, and I'll add, as part of the, the strategy here, it's not just about the tech. The, the tech is the easy part. It's the people part we have to get right. So along with those sort of system capabilities, it's working with PSSs and making sure that all of the, the, the campus staff are aware of the programs and the offerings and making sure those things are standardized so that navigating the system, understanding the information, getting the information is, is simple and not just necessarily residing in, you know, figuring out where to go to a website, but that there's actually someone that understands those nuances to that program and can even facilitate the connection between, you know, the ask and then actually the process to be able to, you know, take advantage of those resources.
Anyone else? Go for it, trustee Lugo. That's why we're here.
Oh, so I was interested in about the comment about the spreadsheets because I was looking at the, what was it called? The, like the appendices? And it does look like y'all used, it doesn't have a page number, but it's page twenty four if you're looking at the PDF. And so the, I love that y'all included a map and showed, you know, kind of where the focus group parents came from, you know, it was randomly recruited. But I just thought it was interesting that, that one observation was that a, a common response was spreadsheets. I mean, that sounds like a really privileged way to, I didn't use spreadsheets and I, I like Excel. And Google Sheets, but I, I just thought that was really fascinating and like, what was the breakout? Like, did parents also say like, I don't know, I just, we just picked the neighborhood school? You know, like what was the?
Yeah, for sure. I, I know I did say, we heard for spreadsheets a lot. I, I would need to go back and count how many times we actually did hear that. So I don't want to misspeak about the data. It stood out because I was like, ah, it is, you do need spreadsheets to go through this process because we do have pain points. I think that was the, the point I was making.
That's helpful. Because yeah, I was like, dang, people, they take it serious. And then I love the idea of, like, you know, at least the, the goal is in the future, there, there will be an enrollment status tracker. So I won't go into the long story, but for our youngest, we wanted her to be enrolled in pre-K four at the same elementary as my third grader. And I had delegated that task to my co-parent. And lo and behold, she did not get into the same elementary school. And so I contacted administration. I was like, oh, I need my kid to be in preschool because she's not in daycare. So I have three campuses that I go to. But I'm still lucky because I still got my kiddo in a pre-K four program. All of that to say, the status tracker, had I known that there was an issue, I probably would have done some nudging. Or just would have done it myself. So thank you for kind of looking ahead to that. And related to that, like looking at how do we communicate with, you know, if it's two co-parents or if it's a parent set or, you know, whatever, whatever the makeup is of the family. The third comment I wanted to make was around the middle school showcase. Because I remember going to that, it may have been last year. And it was at Eastside and it was really cool. You walk in and you get to visit the, the different tables. There was this one particular campus that like had no, no people at their table. And then right across that same space was another campus with it was like a fan crowd. Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. I know, I know. And so maybe not for tonight, but certainly in the near future. Kind of like, what's the plan for the middle school showcase? Like, how do we really help families and parents give each school a fair chance? I know I fell kind of, I guess, victim to some parent to parent feedback when I chose where to send my first child to elementary. Somebody told, you know, handful of people said, oh, don't go to that school. So I was like, oh, okay. That's not really giving each school a fighting chance, right? And so how do we then, and the reason I'm highlighting middle school is because that's something that we hear too. Is that parents are concerned, you know, oh, I'm not going to send my kid to that middle school because there's a lot of, you know, X, Y, Z. And for any parent who has a middle schooler, it's like, you know, X, Y, Z is everywhere, right? Just saying, it's true. So, so yeah, I'd love to kind of hear what the plan is for this year, for upcoming years around middle school showcases.
Definitely. So for, for showcases moving forward, we are planning on adopting our Austin ISD showcase model. So that would be annual, that all of the campuses are having one showcase together. So the middle school, we wouldn't see the middle school showcase in the way that it has been in previous years as an independent showcase. I'm very excited that we've been able to, over the last year, develop an AISD recruitment playbook with various recruitment tactics. One of which is how do you really kind of showcase your campus? How do you highlight the, the wonderful offerings that every campus has that's unique and different to their campus community? And we definitely started working with our campuses on that in advance of the showcase. For example, several of our elementary campuses had never gone to showcase their school in that sort of way. So that was a new, that was a new thing for them. So we, we had, you know, we had to have some conversations of, you, you know, it's, it's, it's not that scary. You just, you know, it's going to be fun. So there's definitely room for growth, but we are going to, we're going to be hosting a series of opportunities to dig deep into that recruitment playbook this spring, actually. We were kind of finalizing that schedule currently. And principals will be able to have that opportunity to dig into some of those recruitment tactics and then also get a copy of the playbook as well to utilize at their leisure.
Okay, one quick thing. Y'all don't have to answer, but can if you want to. Do any of the techniques involve speaking directly to students? Because I'll say this, when my eldest was getting ready to move into sixth grade, again, I had heard from some parent friends like, oh, you know, what middle school are you going to go to? Da, 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 da. Oh, we're going to choose, you know, this school. And again, I was like, hmm, well, should I, you know, follow the crowd or? But his elementary school took them on a tour to the middle school. And he came home and he said, wow, such and such middle school is so cool. And I was like, hmm, let's roll with this. So it's more diverse, it's more economically diverse. It's not the school that the other parents were, were saying, oh, you, they actually said, don't send your kid to that middle school. And these were parents that had kids at the elementary. These were parents who had kids at other elementaries. So if any tactics go directly to the kids, like, I think that's worth the investment.
Yeah, definitely. We have, I, I can say I know of at least three middle school examples that are, that are doing that right now, that they've invited, that they've had buses take some of their elementary kiddos to come and see. So Satter Means, Garcia, and then Martin's in the process of planning that currently, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to share ten seconds. Dude, just want to say thank you very much for taking on something that our parents have told us for a very long time is a barrier and an issue. Our campuses have told us for a very long time is a barrier and an issue. So thank you. And shout out to Dr. Mays for realizing that it was a barrier and an issue when he tried to enroll his own children and found out what a pain it was. So thank you.
Thank you for this. Just one comment. It's kind of like joking, not joking, but you know, like three years from now, there's going to be like artificial intelligence and we can just ask our computer, what's the best school for my kid? And it will tell us like, I mean, so it'll be really interesting if somebody wants to start a business. Use ChatGPT, y'all. It's, it's going to be here before you know it and you, we won't even need to have all these systems. So it'd be really interesting to see what happens, but this will hold, tide us over in the meantime. And it sounds like a great solution. A lot of thought went into it. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, our last report?
Yeah, last report tonight. It's an update. Our biennial fiscal forecast here at AISD would like to ask Ed Ramos, our CFO, to come up and present.
Good evening. Interim Superintendent Segura, President Singh, members of the board. Ed Ramos here, Chief Financial Officer. And we're going to go over a, a budget update and a fiscal forecast as far as, based on preliminary numbers that we do have as a district. And so one of the things I wanted to go over is the summary of the fiscal forecast, which you see, which you will see before you on this slide. The main numbers to point out are, we originally adopted our current year budget with a $5 million surplus. That included $31 million in Essar funding to get us to that balanced budget. Currently, I am happy to say that for the current projections for this budget year, we are still on track to end the year with a balanced budget. Two important numbers that I do want to point out, however, are those two numbers in red. So originally, we had projected a recapture payment of 846 million. Now that we have our final property values, we have our final student counts. We have a projection of where we are with average daily attendance. That projection has jumped to 886 million dollars. And so it is offset a little bit with the property taxes that we are receiving. But again, we are looking at sending the state 886 million dollars this current school year. The number is even more astonishing. Next school year, we're projecting to send over $1 billion to the state. And so those are preliminary, preliminary numbers that we have. But that is the, the reality that we are facing for next, next year. Even so, we are looking at a balanced budget for next year. You see a 4.9 million dollars to fund balance. This is very preliminary because it does not include budgets that we've received from departments and campuses. So that number may fall closer to actually zero. The forecast for the 2324 school year does include a, a set aside of $35 million for compensation slash budget priority. So that number is already included in that 4.9 plus effect for the 2324 school year. So what are we doing to stabilize the budget, not only this year, but future years? We are continuing to evaluate vacant positions and determining if those positions are needed through attrition. We're usually utilizing other funding sources as much as we can, both Essar private grants. And so we are looking at potential partners to continue to receive funds from our partners and finalize and maximize our final year with Essar spending. Also, we're looking at per student spending. We want to compare ourselves to the large urban districts and you see some slides on what that looks like tonight. Also looking at function forty one and twenty one expenditures, which are administrative costs according to the first accountability rating. And so we are continuing to monitor those costs and you will see some numbers as, tonight as well. The important thing is that we did balance our budget last year and this current year. And so that has really helped our, our fund balance originally. Last year, we had projected to really be below our 20% fund balance or, or local board policy estimate with fund balance by the twenty four, twenty five school year. You see the turquoise bars that show that we are in good shape for the next two years. Then we are going to have to really look closely at how we perform in the twenty five, twenty six school year and beyond. So we are closely monitoring those numbers and making sure that we maintain a strong fund balance. Why do we need that fund balance? One of the, the main reasons is cash flow purposes. And so if we have a fund balance below the 20%, we know that we potentially may have to borrow funds as a district in the month of November just to meet our payroll costs. So we do monitor that closely. It is part of our first rating and again, it is part of our bond rating as well. So, uh, we do monitor that closely, uh, it is part of our first rating and again, it is part of our bond rating as well. The next slide shows, uh, again, general tax collections, our local tax collections over the next several years. For fiscal year twenty-three, uh, the green bar shows what we are continuing to send to the state. And so basically, that, that shows our recapture payment. So, uh, for this current school year, fifty-six percent of our local tax collections will go to the state. Uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, fifty-seven percent. And that number continues to increase, uh, for the, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We're projected to send sixty-three percent of local tax collections back to the state, assuming, uh, funding does not change. So we are, uh, again, that, that is a challenge that we will continue to face, uh, for the next several years, uh, with recapture. And then basic allotment, uh, I've mentioned before that we, uh, are funded, uh, at six thousand one sixty per student. Uh, with the passage of House Bill Three, so that, the state did increase, uh, the per student allotment with the passage of House Bill Three. Back in the nineteen-twenty school year. Uh, however, that rapidly got eaten up by inflation. And so when you look at the, the next four years after House Bill Three was passed, you see that, uh, the per student allotment remained flat. Uh, one of the things that we now know is that since House Bill Three was passed, we have experienced fourteen point five percent inflation. And so for the state to really catch up to that inflation factor, they would actually have to increase the per student allotment. That sixty-one sixty by an additional nine hundred dollars per student. And so, uh, we do know that every one hundred dollar increase to the basic allotment will cost the state an estimated one point four billion. And so to just catch up to inflation at nine hundred dollars per student, the state is looking at an increased cost of twelve point six billion dollars. And so that's, uh, kind of some of the, the numbers that the legislature, uh, will be weighing, uh, this next legislative cycle. Uh, also, uh, again, looking at, uh, recapture and enrollment, we, we are planning our budget next year on the flat enrollment growth. Seventy-three thousand seven hundred students. Uh, but again, the main numbers, uh, are recapture eight hundred and eighty-six point six million this year, over a billion dollars, uh, next year. And then we want to, uh, show the board what, uh, our recapture payments look like compared to, uh, the top paying recapture districts in the state. Uh, so those are Houston, Midland, uh, Pecos, Barstow, Toya ISD, and Plano ISD. So those are the, the next top paying, uh, recapture districts in the state. You add those other four districts recapture payments, uh, and we still, uh, send a larger recapture payment compared to all those four put together. So one of the things that we know is this current school year, because of property value growth, recapture payments. In the state increased by eight hundred and sixty-five million dollars. And so what that meant for the state is the state aid dropped by one point seven billion dollars. So they reduced their state aid by one point seven billion. So the state, because of the recapture system, uh, saw a net savings of two point six billion dollars. So in essence, uh, the current recapture system is benefiting the state. Uh, and again, uh, it's being driven by property value growth throughout the state of Texas. I also wanted to, uh, show the board, uh, we had a campus supplemental allocation. I know, uh, the board has asked questions on how, uh, that has been used. And so, uh, that basically was introduced, uh, to a, allocate additional funds to campuses. Uh, who were, uh, mostly economically disadvantaged, uh, students. So that students could have, uh, a full school experience and not just a classroom experience. So, uh, we are receiving data and how these campuses are spending these funds. Uh, you, you see them spending them, uh, for community and schools, uh, type expenditures, student yearbooks, uh, field trips. Uh, some marching band drill design, library books, multi-sensory teaching. So, uh, just wanted to show the board, uh, uh, an example of how some of these campuses are using these funds. Then of course, uh, our teacher salary comparisons. Last, uh, board meeting, uh, showed the board, uh, where we currently are, uh, with teacher salaries compared to our surrounding districts. Uh, again, the purple line is Hays and that is the district that we will try to catch, uh, within the next, uh, year or two. But I also wanted to show where we are because there was a question on how do we compare to the urban districts? And so when you look at, uh, teacher pay in Austin ISD compared to the larger urban districts. Uh, again, our, uh, average pay is in the red line. Uh, then you see, uh, the, um, other districts, uh, such as Cyfair, uh, Dallas, Fort Bend. Uh, Fort Worth, Houston, and Northside. And so, uh, you see that, uh, in the central Texas area, we are, uh, one of the lower paying regions, uh, when it comes to teacher pay. And so there is much work to do for us to catch, uh, some of these larger urban districts. So that is one of the numbers that we are closely monitoring. And how do we get, uh, to where some of these other, uh, urban districts are paying? Then we also wanted to compare, uh, staffing, compare ourselves to some of the larger districts, uh, when it comes to, uh, staffing. Uh, we looked at administration, uh, for campuses, central auxiliary staff, educational aids, and professional support. And of course, our teachers. These numbers are actually, uh, P E M's, uh, categories, uh, that are part of the taper report. So these are specific, uh, specifically coded, uh, positions from the P E M's taper report. Uh, for example, uh, central admin would, uh, include, uh, any position at the director level or above. And so that's kind of what we're comparing, comparing ourselves to with some of the other districts. Uh, then the, the table below shows where we are as a percent for all of these, uh, different, uh, employee categories compared to some of the larger urban. So that, that gives a more, uh, accurate comparison between ourselves and the larger urban districts. And then this graph looks at, uh, administrative staffing, but this is based on, uh, the first rating. And so this is specifically based on function forty-one and function twenty-one expenditure. So, uh, you'll see some of the, uh, areas, uh, within the, the chief's categories, uh, such as technology. That doesn't include all technology positions, uh, because the, the majority of technology is coded to function fifty-three. Uh, these would just include, uh, some of the, uh, function forty-one type positions, uh, within, uh, each of these, uh, different categories. So, uh, you look at, uh, the finance, uh, fi- finances, eighty-three, uh, F T Es, academics, eighty-six. School leadership, thirty-seven. And so these are the, the positions that we're looking at closely and monitoring, uh, with regards to attrition. Uh, because we know that we are above our, uh, uh, administrative cost ratio. We actually exceed, uh, by about two point four million. And so we are closely monitoring that to see how we can, uh, reduce those expenditures. Uh, the next slide shows the non-payroll costs specifically to the function forty-one and twenty-one expenditures. Uh, the majority, uh, of, uh, these are spent with audit contracts, legal services, election costs. Uh, we've got, uh, uh, frontline analytics, uh, the Carisoft and Bonfire, uh, software. So different softwares that finance uses, uh, as well as, uh, human capital. Uh, the chief of staff has the Gibson com- consulting, uh, and external, uh, or internal audit, uh, contract. And some other, uh, different contracts throughout the different areas. So that just gives you an idea of where we spend our funds, uh, on administrative costs that are non-payroll related. And then another area that we're closely monitoring is our per pupil cost. And so this basically looks at summarizing every district's budget and then looking at the total number of students they have. And, and how does that compare to some of the other districts in the area? We wanted to compare ourselves, uh, again, to the large districts. So our current per pupil expenditure is ten thousand two oh eight. Uh, similar districts our size, uh, looking at Fort Bend, nine thousand six eighteen, Fort Worth ISD, nine thousand eight sixty-four. So basically what this tells us is we do have, uh, opportunities within our budget, uh, to, uh, reduce our overall costs. And, and when that happens, then we can, uh, funnel those savings towards compensation or other budget priorities. So, uh, again, uh, wanting to look at those numbers and seeing where there are opportunities compared to, uh, some of the larger, uh, urban districts. And then budget priorities, uh, again, we're, we're looking at some of the feedback that we've received, uh, from the, the different community members. Uh, our board, uh, different committees throughout the district. And so you'll see, uh, some of the, uh, uh, feedback that we, we're currently receiving. Uh, this list will continue to grow, uh, but basically, we're looking at teacher staff compensation, uh, special education, multilingual ed. Uh, mental health, visual and performing arts, uh, professional development, how do we support our teachers? Uh, research and evaluation team and an ombudsman. Uh, childcare, what are we doing with, uh, childcare, are there opportunities there with after-school care? Uh, safety and security, uh, looking at addressing teacher staff morale. Uh, central areas, uh, analyze, uh, that, uh, program. Uh, L R P and the equity audit, and then Title One funding, uh, how are we looking at, uh, Title One funding for next year? Uh, and, and looking at the percentage, uh, cutoffs compared to, uh, the percentages that were used this year. And then this shows basically what we invested in our employees, uh, last year. When you look at the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, we invested twenty-one million dollars in a compensation increase. Uh, that included, uh, raising the minimum wage to sixteen dollars an hour, uh, thousand dollars base pay for teachers, librarians. Uh, two percent salary increase for teachers and librarians, and then hourly wage for our bus drivers, uh, uh, increased to twenty-one dollars an hour. So that package last year, uh, or, or for this current school year, uh, cost twenty-one million. Uh, just as a comparison, uh, we have set aside thirty-five million dollars for the next budget year, uh, for compensation and our budget priority. So that just gives the board an idea of, uh, where historically we have been with our, uh, expenditures. And specifically our compensation, uh, increases. And then we continue to do, uh, and, and, and have community engagement opportunities, uh, both via Zoom and in person. Uh, we are, uh, getting ready to, uh, move forward with thought exchange. Uh, that would enable us to really receive, uh, feedback, uh, in a much larger scale. Uh, we'll be working with our, uh, communications department to assist us with that. Uh, the training for that program starts, uh, next week, actually. And then we're, we also, uh, did create a specific website for the budgeting process. And so that is currently live as of today. And so that is under austinisd.org, uh, forward slash budget process. So we are beginning to put information on that website. Uh, it includes, uh, our presentations that we've done publicly. Uh, we also have recordings, both in English and Spanish, uh, on our budget presentations. Uh, the PowerPoints will be there as well. There's, uh, several, uh, specifics with financial data that we have on that website. And so we will continue to add, uh, to that website as we continue this process. And with that, I open it up to the board for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Uh, trustees, are there any questions or comments?
Um, I do wanna thank you for putting in the other urban districts, um, because as we can see, our, our teachers. You know, Austin ISD is on the lower side of central Texas, especially with veteran teachers. And then it's even, you know, but re- really is that the market? We have, we are a large urban school district. So, um, thank you for putting that up there to, to really show some transparency of, we have not just catching up to do with, in our region. But within other urban districts. Um, and I'm, I'm looking at our vacancies right now with our, um, classified staff positions. And I don't know how many have been taken, taken off. Um, but right now, it looks like we have about over three hundred, um, positions for food services. Custodial positions, transportation, teachers assistants, parent support specialists. Uh, these really, really clerical, really critical roles in our schools. And, um, we know our, our city and county have, um, are paying at least twenty dollars an hour. And we have to be in line, um, with that. To fully staff our schools and make our s- schools functional, safe, um, places with great working conditions.
So we, we have some work to do with our classified, uh, with our teacher pay. Uh, when you look at, uh, what other urban districts are paying, when you look at our region. Especially with the cost that now it is, uh, costing to live in the Austin area. Uh, w- we have to address that, that, uh, gap.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Kaufman.
Uh, thank you for the presentation and for the semi-rosy forecast on some aspects of it. Um, I do want to ask a little bit about the campus supplemental allocation update. I just would like to confirm that that is the, what was initially called the equity.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Um, and just as a reminder, that, that equity fund was something that kind of popped up out of the blue at a, the board meeting. Indicating that we were gonna invest two million dollars to promote equity primarily to support access to, um, the kind of extracurricular programming. That families in more, uh, well-funded families have access to. And it was strangely, um, advocated for by dozens of callers, who, most of whom seem to have no relation, or no kids in AISD. But who lauded our leadership for, um, creating this plan to provide equity to the students of Austin. The name change then surprises me because that was how it was proposed, is that we're gonna provide equity for our students. Um, but then it turned into just a allocation, another allocation to campuses. Um, so I, I would just be curious how that's gonna be, I would actually act like to ask, that that be, like, evaluated? And kind of put into the process like everything else and not just kept in there? Um, personally, my own opinion is that that should be reinvested more strategically into our priorities. Whether that be, um, you know, in, in a way that it can be targeted, right? So it's not, this campus uses it for that, so that we can actually see that it's achieving its goal.
So we have held, uh, that allocation backs, it's two million dollars and that is, and will be part of our, uh, budget priority conversations. Uh, is there a better way to invest those two million dollars, so that is taking place?
Okay, and then I just wanna note, um, I know that on the priorities, that one of the things listed is the essential areas analysis. Um, and I do know that that's the thing that our district is looking at, is how to, um, revisit. The essential areas redesign that was done last year. And, um, I just want to, to note that, um, that that is a conversation that's ongoing and that I know that there's a lot of interest. In this board member of having, um, a thorough review of that to ensure that we are investing that money wisely in ways that have a positive impact for kids.
Any other questions? Did you have one? Okay, I'm just smiling. So, um, I wanted to just echo, um, what trustee Kaufman just said about, um, the, a lot of what you said. But in particular, the essential areas. I don't know how we had this conversation, but I do feel like pretty soon we do need to have a public conversation. I know that the district is working, um, with teachers to really hear what they need. Um, so I, so I know you guys are working on it, but, um, we're, we're still hearing from constituents on this. So when do you think we might be able to get some idea of what that's gonna look like for next year?
Well, um, one of the things that, that I, I hope I, I communicated was that. The, the biggest thing that we can do right now is create a significant disruption in our campuses. Um, you know, our, our principals, our staff, they're receiving their BTOs this week. And so, uh, we recognize there's an opportunity for improvement, refinement, tailoring. Uh, but a hundred and eighty-degree, um, change is not what's, what's likely to occur. That's something that I wouldn't want to support because it would be incredibly disruptive. That's how it was introduced essentially at that time. So, um, we're actually gonna be working closely with, uh, our new, um, chief of, of engagement and communications to develop that strategy. Uh, we've been working already, based on feedback that we received from y'all, uh, in our, um, retreat, uh, to kind of lay that plan out. Uh, I would say that the time that it introduces itself is in that meeting that we have in two weeks where we lay out all the initiatives. And teasing that out and showing how it aligns with the budgeting process. One of the things that I am grateful for is that based on the feedback we received thus far, it's not likely to be a huge shift in budget allocation. And so that does allow the team to continue on while we, you know, separately and in parallel improve the process. Um, I think it's probably a two-year process. By the time it all gets said, and you know, you have to review it again next year and so on and so forth, but that's our current approach. So I would say, you know, as part of our larger planning conversation that's occurring in two weeks is when you'll see it all laid out.
Thank you, yes.
And, and I, I appreciate very much the thoughtful approach and the, um, commitment to stability. In the sense of not wanting to disrupt things further for people than they've already been disrupted, uh, through the last few years of natural disasters. But, um, I will say again, like, stability for the sake of stability, like, stability of a bad thing is still a bad thing. And so sometimes, um, we do wanna make cha- I mean, so stability is one factor. But the safety of our kids in overcrowded P E classes is another factor. And the, um, the access of our students to art and music is another factor that's also very important. And the time for teachers to have collaborative planning together is a very important factor. So there's a lot of important factors, stability is one of many. And I just wanna make sure that stability is kind of prioritized in the right place versus the things that are directly impacting our kids right now.
Trustee Hunter.
I have a, a question for the interim superintendent. I still don't have any real data about like, I hear anecdotal, like, it's working, it's working, don't touch it, don't move it, right? And then I have, we can. And then I have, we cannot do this anymore. And so does the administration have any soft data, not even hard data, but just maybe a conversation with principals that, you know, I want to keep it, you got to get this thing away from me?
So I will tell you that the survey that was provided to our system last semester isn't, I think, at the granularity that we would need to make any informed decisions. I will tell you that the approach that I've laid out about making sure that we're intentional, we're tailoring, if it's working in some campuses, let's understand why it's working, and let's let it continue to work. In other areas where it's not working, let's address why it's not working. And in the conversation I have with the principals, that approach seemed to be an appropriate approach. We are going to be working to collect information and do it in a thoughtful way, but I couldn't produce a plan that was thoughtful in the time that I've had. So we're getting there, you'll have it, but I don't want to sit here and say that I have information that tells me that these schools are doing great, these schools are, it's not really working that well here, it's terrible. I've heard it as well. I've heard all sorts of different, you know, kind of concerns and also, you know, places where it's working well. So we're going to lay that out, and that's part of the work.
Appreciate that. All right, I think that's it. So thank you, Mr. Ramos. Really appreciate your diligence and keeping us fiscally responsible. So this ends the section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we will now move into the preview of the upcoming regular board agendas. This will allow the public and trustees the opportunity to review the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting. AISD staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. And due to the damages caused by the February 2023 winter storm, the administration is requesting to add an emergency purchase consent agenda item to the February 23 regular board meeting. And due to the emergency nature and return to work this Monday, this agenda item was not available for tonight's agenda preview. So just want to make sure y'all are cool with that. We will begin tonight with item eight, which is the agenda preview for upcoming business and finance items. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? Oh, yes, Trustee Lugo.
So I know that Agenda Item 8.1 is really looking at, let's see, what's the term? This isn't for this fiscal year, it's for upcoming fiscal years, the tree service? Is that right? Whoever? Yes. Okay. And so I'm wondering, again, maybe not an answer for right now, but with all the tree damage from the ice storm, I'm just wondering what the budgetary impact would be for the existing contract? But like I said, if you don't have, okay.
So that is part of our emergency agenda item for the board meeting.
Mike.
Sorry. So that is part of our emergency agenda item for our regular board meeting, but we did hire three companies to assist with the tree limb removal. Current estimates are about $250,000 and climbing, and so we are looking at that. With the emergency declaration that was just declared, we are hoping that Travis County does meet the threshold to qualify for federal funding. And if that occurs, and we have submitted our estimates as a district, then we would be able to try to access FEMA reimbursements.
But those, just to kind of level set, those reimbursements take time.
They take a while.
Yeah.
Take about a year, yes.
Yeah. Thank you for that information.
Any other tree-related or other questions? All right. So the next section is item nine, community engagement. Trustees, are there any questions on this item? Nope. Okay. The next section is item 10, facilities. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? And please note that the administration is pulling Agenda Item 10.2, and will bring it back to the board in March. Next, we have Section 11, human resources. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? All right. I did have one question, which it's not really tied to a specific item, but it is a request. I have received some questions from the community about some of the executive level positions that might be coming up. And I would, it could be helpful to have a public communication from the interim superintendent about the rationale behind some of that, because our understanding is that you are hiring, you're kind of hiring just what you need to do to get our systems up and running and saving enough flexibility for the next superintendent, correct?
Absolutely. One of the things that I hope that I communicated with the board, not only through the process of coming into this position, but also since then, is that, you know, we are trying to improve the system. We are doing work right now, and unfortunately, we have several vacancies in key locations. I am making recommendations, but I am briefing the board prior to making those, as I think, about kind of what the need is and kind of the timing of them. But you will see that we will be making recommendations for interim positions when appropriate. We are making sure that we don't commit to any position that isn't absolutely necessary. And then also just acknowledging that, you know, for someone to come and work with us, having an interim title on their name is a challenge. And so I have to acknowledge that. So there's a lot of work ongoing, but we are being very strategic in that, asking for more than what's absolutely needed.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. All right. The next section is 12, policy.
Ten twenty.
Oh, yes, of course, please.
I just want to acknowledge our interims and thank them for being committed and staying to provide us that stability that we do need at this time with our leadership. So to each of our interims who are serving in that capacity, thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. So policy. Trustees, were there any questions on Agenda Item 12? All right. So I think this will end our regular agenda preview, and we will now recess the open meeting at 10:40 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code. Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. For our viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. When we are finished with executive session, we will briefly return to open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you all so much for joining us, and have a great evening. We will now reconvene the open meeting at 1:45 AM. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Kaufman. To adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 1:45 AM. Thank you.
By all remaining living people.
That's right.